Meeting of the Fullerton City Council. Madam City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough as to give the public instructions on public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting is available for the public in person, or you can watch the broadcast at fullerton.legistar.com or any of our government television channels. You can also participate for public comment via Zoom. The meeting ID is 895-3486-8819. You can use that meeting ID either at zoom.us/join, or call 1-669-900-9128.
And Madam Clerk, would you be kind enough as to call the roll?
Mayor Jung.
President.
Mayor Portem Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And Councilmember Dunlap is not yet present.
And do we have any public comments for the closed session items that we're about to adjourn into?
We have no hands raised in Zoom and no one approaching the microphone in chambers.
All right, very good. We'll now recess to closed session, reconvene to regular sessions after we've concluded. Thank you. Okay, we're welcome back. Again, good afternoon, everyone. This is now our regular business and regular session of this special meeting. I'm going to ask the Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to give the instructions for this meeting?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting is available for the public to attend in person, or they can watch it online at fullerton.legistar.com or on our government cable channels, which are Spectrum Cable Channel 3 and ATT U-verse Channel 99. If people would like to make public comment, they can do here in person, or they can do it on Zoom. The meeting ID number is 895-3486-8819. You can join online at zoom.us/join, or call via telephone 1-669-900-9128.
And Madam City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough as to call the roll.
Mayor Jung.
President.
Mayor Portem Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
And Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And if anybody in the building has public comments, please feel free to come to the front. The microphone is right there.
My name is Tony Pakage, and I'm a 22-year resident, 17-year resident of Fullerton. I'm 75 years old. I've lived a long life, and I've had different jobs and with different people. And here's an observation I have in life. There are certain people who like to take advantage of this system. They push everything. They like to push the envelope. They like to do things and see if they get caught and take advantage of the fact that at this point in time, in the last couple of years, we've been very, 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 very thin in enforcement people, on the police side, on the code enforcement side. So people take advantage of that. And JP 23 is one of those things that have taken advantage of that. I've talked with many of the bartender, the bar managers in downtown, and they just say, please don't judge us by what you see with JP 23. We're not like that, and we are abiding by all the rules, and we try to be very proactive about taking care of our bar and taking care of our customers and not causing any issues that the police department has to step in. And unfortunately, that's not the case with this organization, this company, JP 23. And I don't think you should, we should be there and giving people favors for bad, bad business. You know, you don't reward bad news. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Any other public comments? Any Zoom comments, Madam? Okay, this regular session item is JP 23 Appeal of Denial of Entertainment Permit Renewal. And I will allow staff to present what they need to present, and our legal staff as well. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Can we have appearances of counsel for the record, please?
Jennifer Harris, on behalf of JP 23.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Greg Palmer. I represent the city of Fullerton and the Police Department, Police Chief Robert Dunn.
Prior to today's hearing, we had a brief discussion in closed session, and the council has adopted the December 13th, 2021 letter from myself, Harold W. Potter, to the council, Palmer, and Harris with regard to today's proceeding, with regard to the procedures that are going to be outlined and used, and the time parameters that we are dealing with. In addition, we've received some exhibits, and I'm questioning whether JP 23 has their exhibits ready for distribution, or are we going to be referring to these exhibits in total?
Mr. Potter, I think unless Ms. Harris has some objection, we had some conversation over the email last night, and I hope that we have an agreement that all the exhibits in my notebook will be referred to as joint exhibits and may be referred to during the hearing.
Very well. All the exhibits that are in front of us will be referred to as joint exhibits for purposes of the administrative record. Is there a stipulation among council that these exhibits may be admitted? Mr. Palmer?
So stipulated.
Ms. Harris? Counsel, feel free to look at the exhibits, because they've now been admitted into the administrative record. And we will be discussing them, I'm certain, as time progresses. Couple of housekeeping matters. The mayor has graciously deferred. Any objections with regard to the evidence coming in to be deferred to me? I will make a ruling. If council wants to hear the evidence, they will say they want to hear the evidence, and we will proceed accordingly. So if you're making an objection, please address it to myself. Secondly, Ms. Harris wrote a letter of December 10th, 2021, requesting the recusal of the mayor and Councilmember Zara. And I have met with them in closed session, and I am of the opinion that the letter and the exhibit to the letter did not meet the threshold that these individuals have a bias to the degree that they cannot be fair and impartial today. However, for the record, I'm going to ask each council member whether they can be fair and impartial or have any issues that would impact their impartiality. Councilmember Zara.
Yes, I am able to be impartial and have no biases in this matter.
Mayor.
I can be fair and impartial.
Very well. First witness, Mr. Palmer.
Mr. Potter, one quick question. Can we admit and make part of the record the letter for the recusal, please?
Oh, the January, excuse me, the December 10th, 2013 letter is a part of the administrative record.
Thank you.
And let the record so reflect. As well as my December 13th, 2001 procedural letter that both council has signed will be part of the administrative record as well.
And Mr. Potter, I filed a trial brief last night. May I inquire if the council's been provided that?
I do not believe they've been provided to it. However, it will become part of the administrative record and will be available for the review at time of deliberation.
And that trial brief will function as my opening statement.
Very well.
May I call my first witness?
You may.
Kelly Fritzl, please. Fritzl, you're going to have to keep your voice up, because I don't think we have a microphone there at the desk. Would you state your name for the record, please? By whom are you employed, please?
The city of Fullerton.
In what capacity?
I am deputy director of Community and Economic Development.
How long have you been so employed?
Since January of 2020.
Are you familiar with the conditional use permit held by JP 23?
Yes, I am.
Do you have the notebook in front of you there? Can I ask you to turn to Exhibit 2? Do you recognize what is Exhibit 2?
Yes, I do, sir.
How do you recognize it?
It's the resolution from the Planning Commission approving the operation, the conditional use permit for JP 23.
And when was this issued?
October 16, 2019.
Can you turn to the conditions of approval portion of the JP 23 CUP, please?
Exhibit?
Yeah. At the top, it says Exhibit B. Drawing your attention to Condition Number 4. We all can read it, so please don't read it, but what basically did Condition Number 4 require?
Condition Number 4 required within 60 days of the approval of the CUP that the applicant shall obtain a building permit to install lighting on both the northerly and westerly exterior evaluations, and when the lights should have been turned on and off.
Okay. Are you familiar with whether or not JP 23 has complied with that condition?
They have not.
Okay. Let's break him down into two parts. Let's take the western elevation lighting first. Have they, has?
The alley lighting or Commonwealth?
I'm sorry?
Could we refer to it as the alleyway or Commonwealth, if you don't mind?
Forgive me, yes. The alleyway.
Okay.
The elevation that faces the alleyway. You with me?
Yes.
Did JP 23 cause any exterior lighting to be installed on the elevation that faces the alleyway?
Yes, they did install a lighting, but they did not obtain a building permit to install that lighting.
Okay. And was obtaining a building permit required from Condition Number 4?
Very clearly.
Let's take the northern elevation, and that will be the one that faces Commonwealth. You with me?
Yes.
Okay. Has JP 23 installed any exterior lighting on the northern elevation of the building?
No, they have not.
Have they submitted, well, let's put it this way. Within 60 days of the date on which this conditional use permit was issued, did JP 23 have plans to put up that exterior lighting submitted to the city?
No, they did not.
Have they ever submitted plans to install those exterior lighting?
Yes.
And when was that approximately?
On August 2nd, 2021.
So we're talking almost, it's taken them almost two years.
That is correct.
Has there been any code enforcement action between the time the CUP was issued and the plans were submitted?
Yes, there was.
Turn to Exhibit 10, please.
The condition that we talked about on lighting, what exhibit was that?
2.
Thank you.
Are you at 10?
Yes, I am, sir.
Do you recognize Exhibit 10?
Yes, I do.
How do you recognize it?
It's our, from our code enforcement office, and the complaints and the status and all the different, every time we reach out to a client, we note it.
And do you supervise the code enforcement division, among others?
I oversee the manager.
Okay. And are there references in Exhibit 10 to the attempts by code enforcement to get JP 23 to comply with Condition 4?
Yes.
Has the building department had a chance to review the plans that were submitted in August?
Yes. The plans were reviewed by all departments, and on September 2nd, 2021, notice was sent by planning that the plans required corrections by both the planning and public works department.
And is that letter Exhibit 51?
Yes, it is.
And this was sent to JP 23 on or about September 2nd of this year?
Yes.
Have we received, have you received, the building department received any corrected plans yet?
On October 8th, there was a resubmitted plans that were different than the original submission. And on October 14th, Sam, the contractor, picked up plans where they were noted for corrections. Since that time, we have not received additional plans, a resubmital.
So to sum up, we still have lighting installed on the alley elevation that was done without permit?
Correct.
And we don't have any lighting in conformance with the CUP requirement on the northern side?
Correct.
Nothing further.
Ms. Harris?
Thank you. Ms. Fritzl, after the CUP was issued in October of 2019, are you aware of any communication between JP 23 and your department regarding the installation of the lighting? Yes, there was numerous meetings between JP 23, the electrician, and Jacob with the director, Matt Folks, and Christine in planning. Do you know when the first meeting took place? December 23rd, 2019. Okay. Do you know what that meeting was about? To paraphrase, that JP 23 did not want to do the, what we called the photometric plan, that there was a high cost to it, and they did not feel they were responsible to do that. And that was back in December of 2019? Correct. Okay. Was the photometric plan mentioned prior to that meeting to JP 23? I am told it was. Okay. Do you have any notes regarding that? I have no notes. Okay. Were there any other issues that were discussed between your department and JP 23 in December of 2019? Not to my knowledge. Okay. What about January of 2020? I don't have any direct knowledge of January. Okay. Do you have any knowledge of JP 23 submitting particular lighting fixtures to the city for approval? Well, I know, they did submit lighting plans on August 2nd, 2021. Okay, but prior to that? No, we have no records in our intergov, in our permit system. So when we take in plans, we put it in the system, whether they're complete or they're not completed. Well, I think my question is whether or not there was any communication, email, telephonic, or meeting, in-person meeting regarding the type of light fixtures that were required to be installed, or the options for light fixtures? I just have the timeframe between 12/23/19 and April 8/20, there were those discussions. Okay. Do you have any information for any discussions that took place between December of 2019 and, what was it, August of 2021? Do you have any notes regarding any back-and-forth communications? I know Jacob had reached out to me on June 24th, 2021, mentioning that he felt that the police had removed the obligation of the lighting of the Commonwealth site. I responded to him an email that said I had spoken to the police department, planning, code enforcement regarding the CUP, and that the lighting was still a requirement, that if he did not want to meet the lighting requirement, he could amend his CUP, and that would have to go through the Planning Commission. Okay. Do you know, do you have any knowledge as to why the lighting requirement was included in the CUP? They mentioned it several times, and actually, there was a DCRC member. It was for safety of the queuing. Okay. On August 28th, 2019, there was a meeting held called Development Coordination Review Committee, and that's where it was discussed. And Lieutenant Tony Rios discussed during the meeting that lighting and adding lighting to the west side of the building to light the queuing line area, as well as under the canopy over at the patio to light an area in addition. Okay. And that typically something that the business owner is required to do in downtown Fullerton? Yes. Okay. Is there any cost analysis when terms like this are put into a CUP? Is there any expectation of what those costs would be? No, there is not. Okay. So it could be it for unlimited cost? Correct. The condition was put in for safety. Okay. Are you aware of any meetings between your department and any contractors that JP 23 hired to do any quotes or evaluation for the installation? The only one that I was aware of since I was at was on June 30th, 2021, when they asked to have a meeting to get guidance on the lighting. So over and above, we wanted to provide good customer service. We had a building inspector, a building plan checker, and the planning person, project manager, to discuss with the architect, with the electrician, and Sammy was at the meeting. Okay. Would you say that JP 23 is making efforts to do this installation? Well, you know, we've been, I started in January. One of my first business meetings was with JP 23, and we've been discussing the lights for two years, and it took 16 months to get, almost to get the very first submittal. Okay. And how many plans have been submitted? Two. Okay. And one of the plans was rejected for a photometric survey. Is that correct? That is correct. Okay. Do you know how long those typically take? No, I do not. Okay. Do you know, or strike that, do you know how long it usually takes to review plans when they come in? It's a four-week turnaround time. Okay. On first submittal and then second submittal, it, you know, is, it goes down each submittal. Okay. So it does take a few weeks? Correct. Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Can you redirect?
No, sir.
Next witness, please.
If I may, Madam Clerk, would you be able to adjust the sound there a little bit better, because I'm having a hard time hearing.
I will try. I might get to the point of feedback, but I'll redline it as much as I can.
Thank you.
We would call Fullerton Police Lieutenant Joel Kraft, please. How long have you been a police officer with the Fullerton Police Department?
24 years.
How long is lieutenant?
About eight months.
What's your current assignment?
I'm the watch commander for night watch patrol, working Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights.
Is there something called the echo unit?
There is.
Take a moment, explain to council what an echo unit is.
Our echo unit is a team of two officers and one sergeant who patrol the downtown business district on the weekend nights, Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights. They respond to calls for service in the downtown area, make proactive stops as well in the downtown area, make community stops as well in the downtown area.
Are you in charge of that unit?
I am.
And you will monitor closely their activities in terms of the restaurants and bars in the downtown area?
I do.
Are you familiar with JP 23?
I am.
How are you familiar with JP 23?
Working as an officer, as a younger officer throughout the years, I was also the echo sergeant in 2017 to 2019. And then when I came back to patrol as a watch commander lieutenant, I assumed the responsibilities as the echo lieutenant.
In or around July of 2021, were you, what was your assignment then?
July of '21?
Yes, sir.
I was a watch commander of, working Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights.
Your current assignment, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Were you asked at some point to review the crime and arrest reports pertaining to JP 23?
Yes, I was.
By whom?
Chief Dunn.
For what purpose?
To summarize and get a general idea of the calls for service at JP 23, the calls for service, the arrest reports, the activity at JP 23.
And did you do that?
I did.
Physically explain to the council how you went about going to do that.
Several resources. I talked to my echo officers, the echo sergeant. I conducted a CAD call, research, and then we, as a team, went through the calls for service on the CAD call paperwork, and surmised several calls for service, fights, overcrowding, whoever it may be, paychecks, and came up with a summary of those calls for service.
Now, let's put some leaves on the branches there. You said CAD call. I think probably most, a lot of people in this room know what that means, but in case somebody reading this record later on, what is a CAD call?
So whenever a call for service comes in, or whenever officers self-initiates activity, dispatch will input that activity into the computer system, our in-house computer system. And then from there, you can query activity at a certain location.
So would it be correct to say that the CAD calls for service, would they capture crimes reported and arrests made?
Yes, they would.
Would they also capture events that did not germinate into a crime report or an arrest?
They would.
So it's a much broader picture than just looking at crime reports and arrest reports?
That's correct.
Okay. And then did you look at arrest reports and crime reports associated with JP 23 as well?
I did.
Let's focus on the CAD calls for service and the crime reports and arrest reports, okay?
Okay.
Are those records, are those writings made in the regular course of business by a Fullerton Police Department employee?
Yes.
Both police officers and dispatchers?
Yes.
Are those writings made at or near the time of the act, condition, or event described? And is that a duty obligation, let's tear it down and break it down a little bit, is it a duty obligation on a Fullerton police officer who writes a crime report to be truthful and accurate in that report?
It is.
Is it a duty obligation on a Fullerton police officer in writing an arrest report to be truthful and accurate in that report?
It is.
Is it a duty obligation on a police dispatcher when entering information on a CAD call for service to be truthful and accurate in that report?
It is.
And those are the reports that you reviewed?
Yes, sir.
Did you have anything in mind? Were you looking for something particular or some event, some condition?
Not one particular event in particular, but a series of events.
Like what?
Fights, assaults, anything that is significant that comes from that location, pedestrian checks, arrests.
And when you went through these reports, were you focused on a particular time period?
I was.
And what was that time period?
It was from September 1st, 2020 to July 18th, 2021.
Okay. And out of that review, did you prepare a memorandum?
I did.
Is that memorandum Exhibit 13? Exhibit 13 goes on for several pages and has brief little blurbs about arrest reports and crime reports that you found important?
Yes.
Before we get into those reports, I want you to go to the fourth page of Exhibit 13, please. Fourth page- The fourth page of Exhibit 13, the bottom two-thirds of the page has a chart which is introduced by a head note, assault slash battery and fight calls for service at JP 23, is that correct?
That's correct.
Tell the council what this information is supposed to, what you intended to convey here.
This was a list of all assault and battery reports that were entered into the CAD system by our dispatchers and our officers between the dates that we discussed earlier.
And would that include assault and battery reports on which there was an arrest?
Yes.
Would that include assault and battery reports on which there was not an arrest?
Yes.
And would that include assault and battery calls for service that did not end in either an arrest or a crime report?
Yes.
Now, explain that. Why would assault and battery call for service not end up in a report?
At times, when we respond to location, all parties may be gone upon our officer's arrival. It was entered as a assault and battery report by our dispatchers or the call taker, and when the officers responded, they were gone, and the officers cleared it as they were gone upon arrival.
Is another potential reason that somebody didn't want to pursue any criminal charges?
Yeah, if they were non-desirous, it's a potential reason why there was no crime report written as well.
So the list here of all these events, would they be more expansive or less expansive than the crime and arrest reports we're going to get to in a minute?
This is more expansive.
Turn over to the next page of Exhibit 13, please. The list of calls for assaults and batteries continues on that page?
Yes.
And then there's another chart that's introduced with the head note, call for service, reference, and assault with a deadly weapon, you see that?
I do.
What were you intending to convey with this information?
This is a list of all calls for service that were entered and resulted in a assault with a deadly weapon report.
And then the last page of Exhibit 13? You there?
Yes.
Another chart with some dates and CAD call numbers introduced with the head note, JP 23's queue line violations, what were you intending to convey there?
So our echo unit typically responds or drives around downtown area throughout the night, checking on various businesses throughout the night, and these are the CAD calls that were entered by our echo unit that documented when JP's queue line was passed, the tattoo shop or the property line, and had more than 80 patrons in the queue line.
Where did you get that requirement from?
The CUP.
Okay. Was it also in the security plan?
Security plan, yes.
And, okay. So let's get into the actual crime and arrest reports that you reviewed and made, and from which you prepared your memo in part. Can you turn to Exhibit 14, please?
Yes.
And Exhibit 14, for the record, is a Fullerton Police Department, what's called a general offense report, GO number 2020-49014. And again, Lieutenant Kraft, we can all read this report verbatim, but can you just tell me the summary of the event and how it factored into your analysis in terms of what you were asked to do vis a vis the CUP and the entertainment permit?
Sure. On September 5th, 2020, at around 23:50 hours, around 11:50 at night, Officer Valdez was on patrol in the downtown area near JP 23. She observed a large fight in the area on the sidewalk just north of JP 23 on Commonwealth. She stopped and detained two subjects for fighting. One was arrested, and both stated they had just left JP 23. At the jail, during the inventory search, 25 grams of methamphetamine was located on one of the resties' pockets.
I want to emphasize one part of this. From your review of this report, did this appear to you to be what I'm calling a patrol observation, but I think you have a different term for it?
We call it on-view activity, but a patrol observation is just fine.
Okay, and what does that mean?
When, it's, it's a self-generated activity. If an officer observes it while driving around, they'll call it out on the police radio, and then dispatch will enter the call for service that way, versus someone calling the police and then the dispatch entering it that way.
Any indication from this event that anybody from JP 23 called the Fullerton Police Department about this event?
There's no indication on this one, no.
Go to Exhibit 15?
Yes.
Are you there?
I am.
Exhibit 15 is a general offense report, Fullerton Police Department, number 2020-49422. Same question I asked before with regard to the other report. Give us a quick summary of the event and how it factored into your analysis.
Sure, on September 8th, 2020, at around 1:43 in the morning, Officer Valdez was on patrol. He observed a male and female fighting on the north side of JP 23 on the sidewalk on Commonwealth. As Officer Valdez was waiting for officers to respond for backup, he observed a female throw her drink at the male. Once the officers arrived, they arrested the female for fighting in public.
And so again, this was a patrol observation rather than a call for service?
That's correct.
Exhibit 16? For the record, it's a general offense report, Fullerton Police Department, number 2020-53007. Same question as to that event, sir?
Sure, on September 26th, 2020, at around midnight 34, Officer Feaster was in the area driving around near JP 23. He observed subjects fighting in the apron to the alley just west of JP 23. He got out, waited for officers to respond, and both subjects were arrested for fighting in public.
Any information about, in the report, about the individual's connection to JP 23?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Give me a moment, please. Can you go to, do you have the actual report there?
I sure do.
1, 2, 3, fourth paragraph where it talks about somebody named Chang. You see that?
I do.
You're seeing in there about the individuals visiting the bar prior to the fight?
It says a bar.
Okay, fair enough. Exhibit 17? For the record, that's a general offense report, Fullerton Police Department, 2020-56470, right?
That's correct.
What about this event? Got your attention.
October 11th, 2020, at around 11:17 in the evening, officer responded code three, which is lights and sirens, to JP 23 regarding a male with a knife fighting in security. Officer responded, went inside, and JP Security advised that they had wrestle one of their customers and escorted them out of the bar while he was holding a knife. The night, the fight had spilled out onto Commonwealth when officers arrived, and ultimately one male was arrested for brandishing a weapon, assault with a deadly weapon, and terrorist threats.
Next exhibit, Exhibit 18, is a general offense report, number 2020-57487. Tell us about this event.
On October 17th, 2020, at around 1:12 in the morning, Officer Arenas observed a fight in the alley just west of JP 23 between two subjects. He got out, waited for officers, and ultimately one was arrested for fighting in public.
And what time of night was this again?
It's at 1:16 in the morning.
And was the individual very intoxicated?
He was.
Exhibit 19 is a general offense report, number 2020-63183. Tell us about this event.
November 15th, 2020, at around 1:31 in the morning, Officer Feaster was driving in the area, observed a fight inside of JP 23. He observed the fight spill out onto the rear patio as other officers arrived. And as officers were arriving and detaining one male, another tried to intercede and lynch the one subject out of the officer's custody. One male was arrested for fighting, another was arrested for interfering with a police investigation. Narcotics were also located on one of the subjects as they were doing a booking search.
Now, there's a reference you don't hear very much, lynching?
Yes, sir.
What is lynching?
When an officer has someone in custody and someone is attempting to take that person away from their custody.
You spent about 15 seconds in the police academy on that?
About, just about.
And again, this event was a patrol observation rather than a call for service from JP 23?
It was.
Exhibit 20 is a general offense report, number 2021-6757, February 10th, 2021. Tell us about that event.
At around 1:34 in the morning on February 10th, 21, the echo unit was on patrol. They responded to a radio call for service at JP 23, reference a female attempting to hit customers inside. They arrived, located the female sitting outside of the business on Commonwealth on the sidewalk. She was extremely intoxicated, and she was ultimately arrested for being drunk in public.
Double-check the time that you have on that, please, Lieutenant?
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry, it's 23:36 hours.
And was this a radio call or patrol observation?
It was a radio call.
And what was the information that came out on the call?
There's a female wearing a white shirt and jeans inside trying to hit customers.
Inside where?
Inside.
Inside what?
Well, I'll read it further, but... It's quoted saying, "The female white, wearing a white shirt, inside trying to hit customers, no further details."
Okay.
Maybe you could direct me to where?
The call was at JP 23?
Yes, sir.
Not trying to put you on the spot. Next one, Exhibit 21, a general offense report, number 2021-13555. Tell us about that event.
The echo unit was on patrol on the, on March 20th, 21, at around 2 o'clock in the morning, they're driving northbound in the alley just west of JP 23. And they noticed a group of two subjects fighting one another in the alley. They were both detained, and one was ultimately arrested for fighting in public.
And what time again in the night?
2 o'clock in the morning.
Patrol observation rather than a call for service?
Yes.
Exhibit 22 is a general offense report, number 2021-14906, March 27th, 2021. Tell us about that.
At 2:43 in the morning, officers responded to JP 23, reference caller stating that her cousins were getting jumped. Once officers arrived, they observed two males, one, sorry, one male unconscious on the ground, three suspects had fled prior to officer's arrival. The investigation revealed that they were drinking at JP 23, and then when they left, two males assaulted two females, and the cousins tried to intercede, and they were both assaulted as well, leaving one unconscious.
Exhibit 23?
Mr. Ballmer?
Sir?
We get it. All these reports have been admitted into evidence, and I'm taking it that 14 through whatever number are all police reports regarding incidents, correct?
Correct.
You've spent 20 minutes so far with this witness, you have two hours total. You are at 26 minutes as we speak. So I would suggest that perhaps we do it more in summary fashion than one at a time, since we get the gist, I believe. Council members, am I wrong?
Very good.
All right.
Let's go back to 13. Or strike that, yeah, 13. Tell me when you're there.
I'm ready.
Some of the reports that we've gone through and some of the reports that we could continue to go through, are they highlighted in your Exhibit 13?
They are.
Give me a minute. Let me just take a few more minutes and pinpoint, highlight a couple of, just a couple of. Go to Exhibit 26, please. That's a general offense, number 2021-19246. Are you there?
Yes.
Tell us about that event.
Around midnight 47, Officer Greenwood was on patrol. He observed about 10 to 20 subjects fighting just outside the patio entrance of JP 23. One subject was being, was observed being kicked in the head while he's on the ground multiple times. As officers responded, the crowd gathered around the officers. Ultimately, several were arrested. And it was later that the fight was, began inside JP 23 and spilled out onto the patio area and outside.
And again, just highlighting a couple of them. Exhibit 27, please? That's a general offense report, 2021-21853. What about that event?
At 1:33 in the morning, officers were dispatched to JP 23, reference a fight in progress.
On what date?
I'm sorry, on May 2nd, 21. When Officer Feaster arrived on scene, he observed a security punch, one subject in the face as they were fighting. Several officers responded to assist, and at that time, several other fights broke out in front of them. After everything was deemed safe and people were arrested, the security guard was arrested. And once at the jail, the security guard of JP 23, it was found that he had brass knuckles in his pocket. Further investigation during the conversation revealed that he mentioned that he had been carrying those for about three months now, and he carries them for protection.
Exhibit 32, please. That's a general offense report, number 2021-32847. When you're ready, tell us about that event.
On June 26th, 21, at around 22 or 10:51 at night, the echo unit was on patrol with a fire marshal. They were doing various business checks that night when driving near JP 23. They noticed the queue line was well past the allotted area by the tattoo shop, and it appeared there was more than 80 people in the queue line headed south from the business. They got out of the car, talked to the manager, Ernie, and asked what the count was inside of the business. The manager... The manager had no idea what the count was, so the fire marshal along with the police department conducted a count of all the patrons inside. They counted three hundred and thirty-three people inside the business, and their occupancy level is permitted to be one hundred and seventy-eight people inside. The fire marshal issued a citation to them at that time.
Exhibit thirty-six? General offense report two thousand twenty-one dash three, four, nine, eight, eight. Tell us about this event.
July sixth, twenty-one, at around one, one o'clock in the morning, one oh three in the morning. Officers responded to a shots fired call at JP twenty-three. They get there and they locate a victim of a gunshot wound inside the bar. During that investigation, which was a lengthy investigation, but during that investigation, it was revealed that an off-duty JP security guard was involved in a fight with a few other people inside the bar prior to the shooting. Those people were escorted out while the off-duty JP security guard was left inside. Minutes passed by, the off-duty JP security guard was on the patio area when these subjects returned. And it appears that they were attempting to shoot at the off-duty JP security guard. Unfortunately, a innocent bystander was shot as a result, doing a, I think it was an Uber Eats delivery driver.
Go to exhibit thirty-nine, please. Do you recognize what is exhibit thirty-nine?
Yes.
What is it, please?
It's our CAD call synopsis of JP twenty-three between the dates of September first, two thousand twenty, and July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
So what information would this report capture?
All, all types of activity at JP twenty-three, at one oh one South Harbor.
Would it include the crime and arrest reports that, some of which we went through?
Crime and arrest reports, on view activity, parking problems, anything that is generated for JP twenty-three, that specific address.
And again, the time period that we're using here is what?
September first, two thousand twenty, to July eighteenth, twenty-one.
So that's about a ten-month period of time?
About.
Have you had a chance to total up the number of events?
There's a self-generated number on the far right, top right.
Up there at the top, what is it?
Two hundred and eleven.
Okay. And forty? Exhibit forty? What is forty?
It's a similar CAD call synopsis of Matador, the restaurant Matador, between the same timeframe of September first, two thousand twenty, and July eighteenth, twenty-one, at one eleven North Harbor.
So exhibit thirty-nine, would that be a snapshot of that time period of all the calls for service and police activity at JP twenty-three?
Yes.
And would this be the same sort of snapshot look at Matador?
Yes.
And what's Matador?
The restaurant slash bar nightclub as well.
In downtown area?
In the downtown area, yes.
And what's the total number of calls at Matador during that same time period?
A hundred and fifty-nine.
Forty-one? What's forty-one?
A CAD call print synopsis of the restaurant called Divine, located at one thirty-two West Commonwealth, between the same, the same timeframe.
So we're looking at same sort of timeframe snapshot for Divine?
Yes.
And what's Divine?
It's a restaurant slash club nightclub, bar as well, in the downtown district of Fullerton.
As the bird flies, where is it in relation to JP twenty-three?
It's west about a hundred yards.
And what are the, what's the total number of events depicted here?
A hundred and fifteen. That's one, one, five.
And exhibit forty-two?
The same CAD call synopsis of Revolution, which is another slash restaurant bar in downtown Fullerton at two oh five North Harbor, between the same timeframe.
And the total number of events?
Thirty-six.
Exhibit forty-three? What is that?
CAD call synopsis of Zing's, which is a bar, restaurant, and nightclub as well in downtown Fullerton, same timeframe, and the number is forty-one.
And forty-four?
This is for In Kahoots CAD call synopsis, same timeframe at fourteen oh one South Lemon in Fullerton, the number is one oh seven.
And In Kahoots is what type of place?
It's primarily a nightclub.
Is it in the downtown area of Fullerton?
Not at all.
Is it a large place?
Very.
And what's the total number there?
It's a hundred and seven.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Mr. Potter, can I request a quick restroom break?
Get it, Craft. You're still under oath. Go ahead and proceed, Ms. Harris.
Thank you. Lieutenant, we're here on a renewal application that was submitted October two thousand nineteen. Did you review any crime reports or CAD calls prior to September two thousand twenty?
No.
Okay, why not?
I was not asked to.
Okay. Wouldn't that be relevant if you're looking at an application that's submitted in two thousand nineteen? It's an annual application, on my understanding. Is that your understanding as well?
That for the entertainment permit?
Yes.
Yes, I believe it's annual.
Okay, so typically, you would be reviewing the year prior in doing evaluation, investigation for the renewal. Is that correct?
At the time of, yes.
Okay, so, but in this particular case, you only reviewed September two thousand twenty through July two thousand twenty-one, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And from September two thousand twenty through February two thousand twenty-one, were the downtown restaurants and bars allowed to have live entertainment?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And that was...
Yeah, I wasn't the watch commander at that time.
Okay. Are you aware of any restrictions due to the COVID pandemic that would have restricted live entertainment downtown?
Yeah, I believe there was a restriction. I just, I'm not a hundred percent certain.
Okay, thank you. Can you tell me where JP, JP twenty-three is located?
It's at the corner of Harbor and Commonwealth, the southwest corner.
And does that particular location have a parking lot?
Yes.
Okay, is it a big parking lot, small parking lot?
I believe it's like three or four stalls.
Okay, and does it share that parking lot with any other business?
I don't believe so. Just south of, there are, is additional parking for other businesses, yes. I believe those three or four with the handicap stall is JP twenty-threes.
And where is the additional parking located that you just referred to?
Just south of JP twenty-three, near the tattoo shop, and then there's actually the crepes area. There's a parking lot that has about twenty stalls, I believe, as well.
And there's also a parking structure down the alley too, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and there's also another public parking lot. The alley's in kind of a T shape, that's my understanding, and if you were to go right, there's another public parking lot over there too, isn't there?
Yes, over by Heroes, is that what we're referring to?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and the alleyway, where is that located in reference to JP twenty-three's location?
Directly west.
Okay, and what does that alley connect?
Connect Santa Fe to Commonwealth, and then also that one alley that goes east and west towards Malden as well.
Okay, and the alley that goes east and west, are there other bars and restaurants down that alley?
Yes.
Okay, and do they have similar hours as JP twenty-three?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And there, there are people that frequently walk through those alleys going from establishment to establishment?
Yes.
Okay, and you mentioned in your testimony a few minutes ago, you mentioned a PED check. What is a PED check?
It's when an officer stops his vehicle and talks to someone on the street. That's not a radio call.
Okay, would a PED check occur in the case of like jaywalking?
Yes.
Okay, do you find that in your experience patrolling downtown, downtown Fullerton area, are there a frequent number of jaywalking events that take place where that alley occurs on Commonwealth?
All night long.
Okay, it's pretty common?
Yes.
Okay, and where are they, they're crossing kind of where the parking lot in front of Matador is to the alley behind JP twenty-three? Is that correct?
The Pickle Monk, I guess is closer.
Okay.
And then they go across towards the alley near JP twenty-three, yes.
Okay, it's high traffic area right there, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. And there's two public sidewalks on two sides of the JP twenty-three building, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the, do you know what, direction-wise, where those are placed?
Yes, the north-south on Harbor, there's, it butts up to JP's business as well, and then on Commonwealth, there's a sidewalk as well.
Okay.
It goes east-west.
And that intersection right there at Harbor and Commonwealth, is, is that a busy intersection in your opinion?
Yes.
Okay, and at night, is there a lot of foot traffic going across the street there on that, at that intersection at the crosswalk?
There is.
Okay, are there a lot of people that walk those public sidewalks outside JP twenty-three?
Yes.
When you get calls or when another officer comes on the radio and says that there's something going on near that corner of Commonwealth and Harbor, do you ever use JP twenty-three as a landmark to find that incident, even if the event isn't taking place at JP twenty-three?
I don't know if I ever have or not.
Okay, do you know if anybody else has?
I've heard them say, in front of JP twenty-three, yes.
Okay, or the alley behind JP twenty-three?
Potentially, yes. I don't, we call that offhand, but yes.
Okay, so if that's how a call came in, or if that's how a call came in and you did your CAD call search, would those incidents that were near JP twenty-three, would it show up on your CAD call if that's the way it came in?
Yes.
Even if it had nothing to do with JP twenty-three, other than location?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. I want to take a look at some of the, the police reports.
Sure.
Can you take a look at exhibit fifteen? And can you tell me where this incident took place?
Let me get there real quick. It looks like it occurred on the sidewalk in front of JP twenty-three on Commonwealth on the north side.
Okay, is there anything in this report that mentions JP others, JP twenty-three, other than describing the north sidewalk of JP twenty-three bar?
The second paragraph, it mentions JP twenty-three as well.
Again, but it's, is it used for location purposes?
That's correct.
Okay, is there anything in the report that states that the individual arrested was ever a patron of JP twenty-three?
I'll just read it real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. It does not.
Okay. Any reason to think that this individual who was arrested was ever at JP twenty-three, just based on the report?
Just based on the report, no.
Okay, so why is this report included in the exhibits today and part of your evaluation?
Sure, when I got, when I met with my Echo team, I asked them to compile a list of events that occurred at JP twenty-three. This may be a instance where reviewing their BWCs or something that they remembered that they thought that it started from JP twenty-three or had a nexus to JP twenty-three.
But there's nothing in the report that suggests that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you turn to exhibit sixteen? And can you tell me, and if you need a minute to review the report, let me know, can you tell me the location of this incident?
This is on the apron area of the alley just west of JP twenty-three, and the apron is just the driveway of the alley, just west of JP twenty-three.
Okay, and other than describing that particular location, is JP twenty-three mentioned at all in the rest of the report?
Not in the report, no.
Okay, and is there anything in this report that states that any of the individuals involved in this incident were patrons or customers of JP twenty-three?
Not in the report, no.
Okay. Is there anything in the report that suggests that any of these individuals were ever inside JP twenty-three?
Not in the report, no.
Okay, is there anything that suggests they were ever on the patio of JP twenty-three?
No.
Okay. Can you turn to exhibit eighteen, please? And can you tell me where this incident took place?
This again happened in the alley of JP twenty-three on the west side of the alley.
And is there a description of where in that alley it took place?
Just mentions the alley of JP twenty-three.
Okay. Can you describe what's going on in the first three sentences?
It's describing the date and time that the officers were on patrol, who the officers were, what they were wearing, what they were driving.
And the individual in this, does it state where he was located?
Of the second paragraph?
Yes.
Okay. He was driving northbound in the alley of JP twenty-three.
The police officer was?
Yes.
Okay, I'm talking about the, the individual who was arrested. What was he doing?
He was walking southbound in the alley towards Santa Fe.
Okay. Is there anything in this report other than the mentioning of the alley of JP twenty-three that mentions anything about JP twenty-three?
Not in the report, no.
Okay. Can you turn to exhibit twenty-one? Can you tell me what the location of this incident?
It again occurred in the alley of JP twenty-three.
Other than mentioning that alley by JP twenty-three, is JP twenty-three mentioned at all in this report?
Not in the report, no.
Okay. And you stated in, in your testimony that these reports are based off of, you know, almost immediate recollection of events that have occurred by these officers, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I would assume that they, they put important facts into these reports immediately, you know, for purposes of prosecution and such, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if someone was leaving a certain establishment, and let's say that there was a crime and they were intoxicated, would that be an important fact?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Can you turn to Exhibit twenty-two, please? And I'm going to direct you to, at the bottom where the pages are numbered, they're not consecutive, but it's eleven of sixteen. And I want you to go ahead and read that last paragraph, all the way to the end of the sentence on the next page, and let me know when you're finished.
Says, choose L.
No, I don't want you to read it for yourself.
Read it to yourself, yeah.
Read it for yourself, and then she'll ask you questions.
All right, yes, sir. I'm ready.
Okay, does the paragraph you just read, does it state where this incident took place?
It states, according to this witness, where the event took place, yes.
Where did that take place, according to this witness?
Near the Ace Hardware Store across the street on Commonwealth.
Okay. So why is this particular incident, why does this pertain to JP twenty-three if a witness is stating that the incident took place across the street in front of Ace Hardware?
From my memory of this report, I believe one of the subjects went back inside JP twenty-three or exited JP twenty-three and was involved in the fight as well.
Okay, is that in the report?
Yes, not this actual paragraph, but in the report it is, yes.
Okay. And one of the suspects, that's your recollection?
Yes.
Okay, you're not referring to the the individual who went back into JP twenty-three to get his ID, are you? You're referring to a different individual?
I believe it's somebody who's involved in the fight.
Okay. But this fight didn't occur at JP twenty-two, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
All right, can you take a look at Exhibit twenty-four? And can you tell me where this incident occurred?
This happened on the sidewalk just north of JP twenty-three in front of the business on Commonwealth.
Is there anything in this report that suggests that the individual involved in this incident was ever inside JP twenty-three?
No.
Can you turn to Exhibit twenty-five?
Yes.
And it's the same question, where does this incident take place?
It again happened on the sidewalk on the north side of JP twenty-three on Commonwealth.
Is there anything in this report that suggests that the individual arrested here was ever inside JP twenty-three?
No.
All right, can you turn to Exhibit thirty, please? Can you describe what happened in this incident?
Appears that JP Security flagged down our ECHO unit or officers that were driving by, reference a female pushing a male several times. Once the officers responded on scene and got out of the car, they observed the female push another, and she was arrested.
And JP Security flagged you guys down, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and did this incident occur inside or outside of JP twenty-three?
On the street.
Okay, and is there anything in this report that suggests that this individual was ever inside JP twenty-three?
No.
Okay, can you turn to Exhibit thirty-four, please? And this is a lengthy exhibit, I think there's a series of supplemental reports, so I'll give you my question ahead of time, it's the same question I've been asking, is what is the location of this particular incident, and if you need some time to review the exhibit, I'll allow it.
Yeah, I actually remember this incident, I was on scene, so it happened in the alley just south of JP twenty-three, near the dumpsters.
Okay, how far south?
Ten feet.
Okay.
Five feet.
Okay, and I want to refer specifically to the reports.
Okay.
Even though you were on scene, but the reports are being offered into evidence, so my question is, is there anything in these reports that establishes that any of these individuals were customers or patrons of JP twenty-three?
Well, I'll have to read that real quick.
Okay, thank you, if you would.
A thirty-second pause, Ms. Harris, are we done?
He's reading the exhibit, Mr. Potter.
All right.
After reading the, all the supplementals, nowhere does it say that they were inside of JP twenty-three.
Does it say that any of them were a customer or patron or had been in that business at all that night?
No.
Okay, and I just asked you previously, that would be an important fact in the incident to include in a report, wouldn't it?
Where they were drinking?
Yes.
Uh, not necessarily, depending on the crime, I suppose.
What's this particular crime?
Assault.
And is it multiple assaults, or just?
It was a large fight that broke out.
Okay, so don't you think that would be an important fact in this particular circumstance?
Potentially, I don't know if the officers would ask that particular incident, the assault, the elements of the crime of assault is not really pertinent to where they were at, I suppose.
Okay. But there's nothing to suggest anybody was at JP twenty-three?
There's nothing to suggest that, no.
Okay. Can you turn to Exhibit thirty-seven for me, please? And I'm, rather than have you read it, I'm going to summarize just briefly my understanding, and you can tell me if you agree with this or not, so the way I read this report is an individual made a report that he was beat up, actually, he says jumped by five males in a security, and security outside of JP twenty-three, and his jaw was broken. Do you recall this incident in this report?
I read the report, yes.
Yeah, okay. Was this report made at the time that that incident act, or allegedly occurred?
No, it was not.
Do you know how, when it was made?
The next morning, I believe.
Okay, and can you turn to the last page of this exhibit? Are you familiar with JP twenty-three's security camera system at all?
Not as of late, I do remember when I was the ECHO sergeant taking a look at it, but I've not reviewed it recently, no.
How long ago was that?
Uh, twenty-seventeen.
Okay.
When I was the ECHO sergeant.
So not recently?
No.
Okay. So in this last paragraph, they, it appears that security camera footage was provided to the Fullerton Police Department, as well as a witness statement, the security guard who had apparently been identified as the assailant, and from the conclusion of this this report, I'm concluding, and you can agree or disagree, that there was no evidence in support of those allegations, do you agree or disagree?
I'm not aware of any follow-up investigation that that took place after this initial report.
Okay, did any se- security cameras show the fight as described by this individual?
I don't know.
Okay, does the report say there was anything on the security?
If it does, I can read it and I'll let you know.
Would you please?
Sure. What was your question again?
Let me ask it a different way, what is the security footage that was provided to Fullerton PD, what did it show?
It showed a group of five subjects walking out of camera view towards the alley.
Towards the parking lot south of JP twenty-three, correct?
Yes.
And they are seen walking out of view?
That's correct.
There's nothing, there's no assault or battery seen on that footage according to the report, report, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Can you turn to Exhibit fifty-two, please?
Yes.
And actually, if you could review fifty-two and Exhibit fifty-three, I think they're related.
Can I go ahead?
Can you tell me what happened in this incident?
On the thirtieth of January in twenty-twenty-one, the ECHO unit was dispatched to JP twenty-three at twenty-three, twenty-nine hours regarding a assault report, they arrived and located an intoxicated male subject, who said that while waiting in line, he was assaulted by another individual, that individual had left the location, at that time, the intoxicated male was asked to leave by the officers.
Okay, he was in line at JP twenty-three, correct?
Yes.
Nothing to suggest he was ever inside JP twenty-three?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And can you turn to Exhibit fifty-four for me, please?
Fifty-four?
Yes.
Okay. Can I go ahead?
Okay, can you tell me where this incident took place?
This happened in the parking lot just south of JP twenty-three at one-fifteen South Harbor, and I believe it's like the Crepes parking lot, the one with about twenty or thirty parking stalls.
Okay, and what happened in this incident?
Officers were flagged down, reference a passed-out female driver in a vehicle, they made contact with her, I noticed vomit all over her chest and throughout the car, I believe they noticed that there was like a wooden baton as well on the on the dash, they talked to her, ultimately, she was arrested with a baton, and I believe it's DUI or for drunken public.
Is there anything in this report that suggests that this individual was ever at JP twenty-three?
Not in the report, no.
Okay. Can we go back to Exhibit fifty-three really quick?
Yes.
And this is the same, this individual in this report is the same individual in fifty-two, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and he was, this particular individual was refused entry into JP twenty-two, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Multiple times, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and he actually assaulted the manager of JP twenty-three for refusing to let him in, is that correct?
Uh, allegedly, yes.
Okay. Was this a a call that was seen by patrol, or was this called in to dispatch?
This is an on-view activity, the officers were, this is only fifteen, twenty minutes later than the original call, they see the same subject arguing with security.
Okay, in the original call, was he arrested?
No, he was not.
What was the determination, what happened as a result of that call?
Uh, security officers wanted him to leave the location.
Okay, did the officer tell him to get into an Uber?
Uh, possibly, I don't remember those exact words, but told him to leave.
Okay, and then this Exhibit fifty-three is a second call, wherein he didn't leave, correct?
Uh, yes, not called, but they on-viewed it, yes.
Okay, and at that point, was this individual arrested?
Yes.
What was he arrested for?
Uh, I believe it's a private part, a private person's arrest for assault.
Okay, and do you know whether that was assault was towards the manager of JP twenty-three?
The manager or security, one of the two, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. I wanna talk about the CAD, the CAD call sheets really, really quickly.
Okay. What number was that again? I forgot.
I believe, uh, it starts at exhibit thirty-nine.
Yes.
Did you, did your department see a, uh, increase in calls in the beginning of twenty twenty-one?
I don't know.
Okay. Did you see it, do you know when the downtown bars and restaurants were allowed to open for indoor services?
Don't quote me on it, but I think it was March, April of twenty-one.
Okay. Did you see a increase in calls to downtown Fullerton during that time period?
Increased, uh, patrons in downtown. I don't know about calls, but definitely increase in patrons to downtown area, yes.
Okay.
From the COVID duration, yes.
Okay. Do you know whether there was an increase of, uh, criminal activity between March two thousand twenty-one and May two thousand twenty-one in the downtown Fullerton area?
I couldn't be certain on that, no.
Okay. Let me go back to, exhibit thirty-four really quick. If you could go to, one, two, the third paragraph and read the first sentence of Officer Ramirez's report. And actually, can you read that out loud?
It should be noted that we have had an increase in fights and assaults in downtown Fullerton recently. Each fight call-
That's, that's far enough. Just the first sentence.
Sure.
Okay. Do you concur with that statement?
Uh, it's possible. I wasn't working downtown at this time, but, uh, our officers definitely noticed an increase, uh, in people in the area.
Okay. And what is the date of this report?
Uh, it was July third.
Okay. And what is the, the point of putting a statement like this in a report? Is it to influence prosecution?
Contextualize, I would suspect.
Okay. Can you turn to same exhibit, um, page thirty of thirty, or I guess it's identified as thirty of thirty-seven?
Number thirty?
Thirty of thirty-seven, yes. It's, no, it's exhibit thirty-four.
Okay.
Same exhibit. It's just a few pages back.
Oh, page thirty?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, what page again?
Thirty of thirty-seven.
All right, ready.
Okay. The last full paragraph, not the last two sentences, but that full paragraph before that, do you see that paragraph?
I do.
Can you read that out loud, please?
The whole thing?
Yes.
It should be noted, I have been working week and nights in downtown Fullerton for approximately two years.
Go down for the court reporter.
Yes, sir. The downtown Fullerton bar area consistently has patrons becoming inebriated and engaged in physical altercations. As of late, the patrons in downtown Fullerton have more, have been more aggressive and more uncooperative with police, making the downtown Fullerton area unsafe for patrons and officers who patrol the area. Many patrons who have recently been arrested for fighting in public have told officers they do not care if they are arrested due to charges being dropped. Looking to deter this behavior, I request a charge of four fifteen, subsection one of the penal code to be filed against Davis.
In this statement, does the officer mention JP twenty-two-three?
No.
Okay. He refers to downtown Fullerton, correct?
Yes.
And in this, in this sentence on the first page of thirty-four, any mention of JP twenty-three?
Which sentence?
First sentence, paragraph three.
It does not?
Okay. Refers to downtown Fullerton, correct?
Mentioned they were working as a downtown Fullerton enforcement unit?
Well, nowhere it says. It should be noted that we have had an increase in fights and assaults in downtown Fullerton recently.
Fourth paragraph?
Yes. That first sentence.
Yes.
Okay. Refers to downtown Fullerton, correct?
Yes.
What do you, how do you define downtown Fullerton?
It's the area between Malden, I'm sorry, between Lemon or Pom- Lemon and Highland area, and between Santa Fe or the train tracks to Chapman.
Okay, thank you. All right. If you could turn to exhibit thirty-nine, back to the CAD calls.
Okay.
So, you, you were tasked with evaluating the CAD calls for purposes of the live entertainment permit renewal, correct? It was your job to gather this information to make a determination and investigate to either approve or deny that permit. Is that right?
Process.
Okay. So, when you look at the CAD call sheet, you gather this. By my count, there's approximately forty-one ped checks in this CAD call. Should those ped checks be considered when evaluating whether to renew a live entertainment permit?
Potentially.
Why is that?
If a ped check occurs and there's a nexus to JP twenty-three, then it would, I believe it would be, uh, significant or important.
Okay. But how are we to determine if there's a nexus or not?
You'd have to go through each one.
Okay. And we don't have that before us?
No.
Okay. So the ped checks could be people walking from one establishment to the next, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. And there's several establishments over in that alley area, correct?
Yes.
Okay. What about parking citations? Is that relevant to the renewal of a live entertainment permit?
Uh, probably not.
Okay. What about alarms? There's a number, I, I've got twenty-one alarm calls. What, what is an alarm call?
Uh, I'm assuming Jacob has an alarm system on his business and if the, if the alarm goes off, the police will respond to it and it's entered as a CAD call.
Okay. That's, you know, uh, when the business is typically closed, right?
Sometimes.
Okay. Should that be considered in evaluating a live entertainment permit?
That's not something that I would use to evaluate that, no.
Okay. So, I think there's twenty-one of those. Would there ever be a situation where, and there would be an alarm call that would be relevant to a live entertainment permit? Or have you ever had a situation where it was relevant?
To answer the second question, no.
Okay. What are bar checks?
Uh, it's when, uh, our Echo Unit or a team of officers will conduct a, a business check of the bar.
What does that entail?
Sometimes includes, uh, doing a count, uh, from the outside, from the inside, it all depends.
Is there any, are, are these random, you know, just bar checks to make sure everything's going okay?
Yeah, a lot of times our Echo guys are out there just conversing with security or the manager with various businesses and they'll call it a bar check. So the other officers in the area know where they're at in case something goes down.
Are these relevant to evaluating a live entertainment permit?
Uh, potentially, but probably not.
Okay, thank you. So on the exhibit thirty-nine, there's two hundred and eleven calls, but I think you agree that some of these may not particularly be relevant when it comes to evaluating a live entertainment permit. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And did you reveal, view the CAD calls for, uh, the other businesses, I believe their exhibits forty through, forty-four?
I glanced over them, yes.
Okay, you did. And where is Matador related, uh, or, I'm sorry, strike that. Where is Matador located in relation to JP twenty-three?
It's on Harbor Boulevard. The address is on Harbor Boulevard, uh, one block north of, so a few, a few businesses north of.
Okay. And where is Divine located?
Uh, about a hundred yards west of JP twenty-three.
Okay.
On Commonwealth.
Across the street or same side of the street?
Same side of the street.
Same side of the street? Okay. Did you see an increased calls, call for service to Matador between March twenty twenty-one and July twenty twenty-one?
In relation to?
Calls to service for fights, assaults, any violent criminal activity. Did you see a, a number of those during that time period?
There were, there are some documented, yes.
Okay. What is a disturbing the peace call?
It could be a fight call. It could be if someone's complaining about loud music. Generally though, it's like a, it could be an unruly crowd. It could be of various disturbances.
Okay. Be loud arguing? Would that be something that would be considered disturbing the peace?
Yeah, potentially. It all depends on how the dispatcher's enter the CAD call.
Okay. So it's not necessarily a, a violent, uh, call? You can't te- I mean, can you tell by, by just seeing disturbance of peace whether or not it's a violent criminal activity occurring as opposed to maybe a loud argument on the, in public?
Hard to tell.
Okay. Can you take a look at the CAD call sheet for Matador, which is exhibit forty?
Okay.
And I just want you to look at March of twenty twenty-one, those calls. And if you could, uh, for March twenty twenty, can you count the number of disturbance of peace or fight calls that came in for Matador?
Just for March?
Yes, just for March.
I believe there's nine, if I counted correctly.
Okay. And can you do the same for JP twenty-three, just for March? It's exhibit thirty-nine.
I'm sorry, that was, I think, I think I just did Divine, sorry. Let me try Matador again. Yeah, it was nine for Matador.
Okay.
I believe there's six.
Okay. So Matador had more?
Yes.
Okay.
That's documented on, on the, on the CAD call.
On the CAD call, based on the CAD calls, which is the evidence in this case.
Correct.
It shows Matador had more than JP twenty-three in March of two thousand twenty-one, correct?
Yes.
Would it be a correct statement to say that based on that information, there were fights and disturbing the peace calls on both sides of Commonwealth? JP twenty-three's side and then over in the area where Matador is?
Yes.
Okay. So it wasn't just limited to where JP twenty-three is located? In fact, there were more calls on the other side, isn't that correct?
Correct.
Can you look at April of twenty twenty-one?
For which exhibit?
Oh, I'm sorry, for, let's start with, um, JP twenty-three, which is exhibit thirty-nine.
Okay.
And can you tell me how many disturbing the peace or fight calls there were for April of twenty twenty-one?
I believe there's twelve. For JP.
Okay, thank you. And can you tell me how many for Matador for April twenty twenty-one?
I believe there's eight.
Okay. So four more than Matador for April.
I already forgot what I said the first time, but it was-
He's at twelve.
Okay.
Still a lot for, for both sides, you know, um, let me strike that. That would be a lot for, for any one location, eight, twelve, would you agree?
I don't know what the, the normal number is.
Okay. But they're very close in range. You know, there's only four more in the entire month, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
According to the CAD calls, yes.
According to the CAD calls. And you said Divine is, um, how far away from JP twenty-three?
About a hundred yards. It's a few businesses just west of.
Let's look at Divine then. So let's look at Divine in, uh, May of twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Can you tell me how many fight or disturbing the peace calls Divine had in May of twenty twenty-one?
Three? Oh, I'm sorry, that's Revolution.
Yeah. It's exhibit forty-one, I'm sorry.
All right. There we go. Eight, had I counted?
Okay, I think I had twelve, but let me just double check here. Are you including the music disturbances or not?
No, and nor the parking problem.
Nor what?
The parking problem.
Okay.
Where it says disturbance parking.
Okay. Okay, what about in, where we're at this one, hold on a minute? What about in May for Divine, twenty-twenty-one?
You know, Ms. Harris, this is not a guessing game. If you got the number, count him the number. Having him count while we're all waiting for a number with an hour into cross-examination, almost twice as long as the direct, you're burning your time.
Well, I would be testifying for him then, wouldn't I? If I said-
You know, I'm just trying, I'm trying to let you know, counsel.
I know, I know what time it is.
Complaining about it, that your time is waning away.
Yeah, and for the record, I already did complain before we started that I wasn't going to have enough time. And you stated that we would be flexible.
Not like this. I'm telling you, let's get it on.
What was the number? I'm sorry.
I didn't have a chance to, to count.
Okay, it was for May of twenty-twenty-one.
For what business again?
For Divine.
Didn't we just do May?
We did April.
We did it.
Or I mean, yeah, I think we did April.
We just did May.
Did you tell me what that number was?
Yeah, I believe it was-
Then maybe I went back to April before I was interrupted, I think it was April that I was asking.
So you want April?
Yes.
For Divine. Five for April.
Okay. So it seems that Matador and JP twenty-three are very close in number during this time with respects to calls, would you agree or disagree?
What type of calls?
The assault, disturbing the peace calls.
What were the numbers? I, I forgot, if you wrote them down, it'd be great to tell me.
Okay, well, we had So, actually, you know what, I'll just withdraw the question because I think you've already answered that previously.
Okay.
When I asked you about the numbers for JP twenty-three, Matador. Do you know whether people who go to Divine, do they also walk down the same sidewalk that is on the side of JP twenty-three and use the same alleyway?
I don't know if they do or not, I would suspect-
Is that a, is that a route to get to Divine?
Depending where you park, yes.
Is Divine located on that same north sidewalk?
It is.
Okay, and is the alley that runs behind, or to the west of JP twenty-three and has that T shape, does it also run by Divine?
The east-west alley?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And just one more, one more question with respect to these calls, you were not actually patrolling during this time period, correct?
Part of it I was, from about June to September.
Okay, and prior to that, you were not?
That's correct.
Okay, why did you start patrolling in June?
I was promoted to the rank of lieutenant.
Okay.
I was previously in the traffic bureau.
Okay. Are you aware of a meeting that took place on May tenth, two thousand twenty-one at three PM? At the, I want to see, Fullerton Community Center? Do you have any knowledge of that meeting?
I don't know what, what type of meeting you're talking about.
Okay. Safety, maintenance, and compliance issues for downtown restaurants. Does that meeting sound familiar to you?
For that again?
Fullerton Community Center, May tenth?
I don't recall that meeting.
Okay. Other than the one report that was previously mentioned about an overcrowding event, are you aware of any other overcrowding events at JP twenty-three?
In what timeframe?
In the past three years.
Oh. Potentially, when I was the Echo Sergeant, we, I believe we had a overcrowding at JP twenty-three, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen.
Okay.
But I, I don't know the dates off, off the top of my hand.
Okay, that would be approximately three years ago, wouldn't it?
Twenty-eighteen, yeah.
Okay. Since then, other than the one, do you have any knowledge of any other events?
Not any personal knowledge, no.
Okay, thank you. With respect to the, the queuing calls that you referred to in your testimony, are you aware of any agreement between JP twenty-three and Tony Rios regarding a written consent from the tattoo shop to extend past JP twenty-three's utility box and in front of the tattoo shop?
No, I'm not.
Okay, never heard anything about that?
No.
Okay. All right, no further, no further questions.
Any redirect, Mr. Palmer?
Yes, briefly. Ms. Harris asked you, going through some of the CAD call lists, the fact that it included things like parking and alarms and bar checks, do you remember that?
Yes, sir.
And would that be true of all of the CAD call reports for Divine and Matador?
Yeah, no different.
The tattoo business, where is that in relation to JP twenty-three?
I believe it's just south of JP twenty-three, maybe one or two businesses south.
Your experience working in Fullerton as many years as you have, is that tattoo parlor open late at night?
Sometimes.
One o'clock?
I'm not sure of the hours.
Eleven o'clock?
Potentially.
Crepes Bone Apart, is that open late at night?
Yes.
Till when?
Fairly late, I don't know when they're closing hours, but maybe midnight or so. Their hours fluctuate, I think, depending on business.
Fifty-four, please, exhibit fifty-four. Now, you, you remember Ms. Harris pointing out that the report, exhibit fifty-four, does not confirm, nothing in the report confirms that the woman described in fifty-four actually was at JP twenty-three?
That's correct.
Did you and I talk about this last couple of days?
We did.
And did you do some further checking on this event?
Yeah, in preparation for this hearing, yes, I did.
What'd you do?
I reviewed the body worn cameras of the officers involved.
And which fine would you did that?
They were speaking to the female who was ultimately arrested and had asked her where she was drinking that night, and she had mentioned she had consumed a fishbowl at JP twenty-three prior to coming to her car.
Sert a quick objection that that evidence is not before us and it hasn't been presented in this case.
It is.
When, when you did your review, were you fixated on just the interior square footage of JP twenty-three?
No.
Are there individuals that want to visit JP twenty-three, do they tend to congregate around the building?
At times.
Explain.
There's a queue lined, sometimes they'll have a, a VIP line on Commonwealth, they just have people congregating near the handicap stall in, in the alley as well.
And is part of the, part of this issue that we're presenting here, the queue line presents problems?
At times it does.
Is, does the queue line tend to, on certain nights, accumulate on the south sidewalk of Commonwealth in the area of the entrance door of JP twenty-three?
It has, at, at times.
And does the queue line also congregate in the alley behind JP twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay, so, and, and are there particular times at night that the queue line becomes large?
Yes.
What times, what's the span?
Eleven, eleven to one, eleven to twelve-thirty.
So if we went back to all those reports, remember all those reports that Ms. Harris went through with you saying nothing in the report says the person was actually inside JP twenty-three? You recall that?
Yes.
I mean, I could, I wrote down the numbers, we don't need to go through all of them, but-
Thank you.
If an event occurs on the south sidewalk of Commonwealth, or an event occurs on the west alley behind JP twenty-three between eleven and one or two AM, do you think it might have something to do with the queue line?
Potentially.
I'm going to object, it's speculative.
Just aid.
Nothing further.
Anything further, Ms. Harris? Next witness?
Chief Dunn.
Palmer, you have an hour and nineteen minutes left.
Thank you.
Ms. Harris, you have fifty-three minutes left. Hold on a moment, hold on a moment. Let's do five minutes.
May I inquire? Thank you.
You do.
State your name for the record, please.
Robert Dunn, D U N N.
How are you employed?
Chief of Police, City Fullerton Police Department.
How long have you been the chief of police for Fullerton Police Department?
A little over three years.
Prior service in law enforcement before that?
Anaheim Police Department.
For how long?
Eighteen years.
So total time in law enforcement?
Twenty-one.
And as the police chief of the city of Fullerton, are you responsible for administering, renewing, denying, revoking entertainment permits?
I am.
And is that authority granted in three point zero eight, chapter three point zero eight of the Fullerton Municipal Code?
I know it's in the municipal, municipal code, yes, sir.
And were you aware that JP twenty-three had a live entertainment permit for several years?
Yes.
And did it expire sometime in or around October of two thousand and twenty?
I don't remember the exact dates, but I knew that it was expired and was up for renewal.
And did they submit some information asking you to renew the permit?
They did.
And was that, was your decision delayed for several reasons?
Yes.
What?
Most of it had to do with COVID and the suspension of kind of indoor congregations, there was no rush to issue any type of permitting as it relates to that.
And so at what point in time after they applied to renew the permit, did it become important for you to determine whether or not to renew it?
It was, it came up, I believe, as part of my analysis on calls for service happening there, and, and I can give you some anecdotal information as relates to that. I had noticed a trend in the emails that we receive as command staff members about calls for service happening there, one of them being the shooting, the other one being someone arrested for the brass knuckles, and so I asked for the analysis of the calls there to see if there truly was a bigger problem than just those two calls, and then I was told, by the way, there's a pending application for the live entertainment permit, and this remedy meeting process exists, so perhaps you should exercise that.
And you were here when Lieutenant Craft testified?
I was.
And did he provide you the information regarding the calls for service and the arrest reports, things like that?
He did.
And did you consider those things?
I did.
Did you tee up what's called in the municipal code a remedy meeting?
I did.
Would you turn to exhibit forty-six, please?
Yes, sir.
Do you recognize what is exhibit forty-six?
Yes, sir.
What is it?
So a letter that I sent to JP twenty-three indicating my desire to have a remedy meeting with him and his counsel.
And it speaks for itself, did you intend by this letter to outline some of the issues that concerned you vis-à-vis the entertainment permit?
I did.
And it goes on, there are several issues, were, were there two more important ones? Were some of the issues more important than the others?
Yes.
Can you explain?
One of them was the crimes occurring in the location, specifically outlined in the letter are the two that I mentioned earlier, the brass knuckle arrest of a security member and the shooting that occurred related to that location, that was problematic for me and I wanted to discuss it with him, and then also we had had some allegations made that there were some sexual assaults perhaps pertaining to that establishment, we had done some analysis and come up with perhaps that there was a drink there that might be problematic, and I wanted to bring it to his attention, so that's why I outlined that in there, so both of those were probably the two primary issues that I was wanting to address.
I'm going to state a quick objection that according to the trial brief, the, many of the issues have been dismissed, so to the extent that there's testimony on issues that have been dismissed, I assert an objection.
The trial brief is what it is, I'm sure that if they've been dismissed, we're going to hear about it and allow Dunn, Chief Dunn, to, to answer those questions, so the objections are will proceed, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, was this, was this letter exhibit forty-six mailed to, I'm, I'm not being disrespectful, but I'm just going to call him Jacob.
Me too, because I don't want to get his last name wrong and be disrespectful, so.
Was it mailed, Don?
It was mailed, hand-delivered, and then- It was mailed, hand delivered, and then emailed as well.
And the remedy meeting was set for what date?
Let me double check.
It's on page two.
August twenty-seventh at ten AM.
And did that go forward?
It did.
And did Jacob and Ms. Harris appear?
They did.
And did you talk about all these events?
We did.
Okay. Did you take into consideration what Jacob said in response and what Ms. Harris said in response?
I did.
And did you then make a determination, following the remedy meeting, what to do with his entertainment permit?
I did.
And did you send that decision in writing to him?
I did.
Is that exhibit forty-seven?
Yes.
And again, we can read the exhibit for ourselves, but summarize for the council what you decided to do after the remedy meeting.
So we sent that out on September twentieth, again, it was delivered in the same manner, both by email, hand delivered to the location, and by certified mail. And then I basically went point by point from my initial letter. I did provide credence to JP 23 in the areas that they already made improvements, which we appreciated, and incorporated some of the dialogue that we had. And really, the final point as far as the live entertainment permit was, was that I determined that I was going to decrease the amount of hours for allowed live entertainment there to ten o'clock on the weekdays and eleven o'clock on the weekends. That's PM.
And was it your understanding that you had the authority to do that under the Fullerton Municipal Code?
Yes, sir.
Would you take a moment and explain to the council why you think that modification was necessary?
So when I took into consideration the totality of circumstances, calls for service, I personally had gone out to the location several times over that summer period where we had the influx of patrons around there. I watched crowd behavior. That particular alley is a thoroughfare, as Jacob indicated too during our meeting, for patrons from all over downtown making their way back to the parking structure. And that becomes kind of a choke point, and during those choke point moments is when people bump up against each other and fights start. And so my thought process behind the condensing of the hours was to perhaps have his patrons leave prior to that egress and then have other patrons come later on in the evening. And that's kind of congruent with some of the other businesses that are down there, one of the other bars closes early now as well. And so I felt that might give, alleviate some stress in downtown at closing time.
Now, let me, let's make one thing clear, you do, you do or do not have the authority to order JP 23 to shut it, to shut down all business at a particular hour?
I do not have that authority.
So could they, based on your, your decision after the remedy meeting, could they remain open until two AM?
Absolutely.
Just couldn't have live entertainment?
That's correct.
And following mailing and serving the September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one letter on Jacob exhibit forty-seven, did you get a response from Ms. Harris?
There were several correspondents that went back and forth, including through your officer.
Is exhibit forty-eight one of those responses?
Yes.
And again, we could read it for ourselves, but what was your reaction to this letter?
I think it, my reaction was, it was congruent with what we had discussed. In our meeting, when we had the remedy meeting, we were in agreement on most of the items, and the one item that we were not, clearly not gonna agree on in there was any reduction in the live entertainment hours. And I was told that if I in any way reduced those hours, that they would object to it. And I, so I wasn't surprised that there was an objection.
So from your point of view, based upon this letter, did the remedy meeting, was it a success?
In some ways, yes.
Was it a success in terms of getting an agreement between the parties to reduce the hours for entertainment?
No.
And did Ms. Harris threaten to sue you?
I don't remember.
That's, that's their client's right. So, you know, we're all, you know, that's part of doing business.
Did you, after you got the letter from Ms. Harris, what did you decide to do?
I had a conversation with council about discussing with them some terms that we may agree on.
And at the end, did you, was there an agreement?
No.
So what did you decide to do?
Then to trigger this hearing, so that there was due process for JP 23, I had to deny the entire permit so we could come here today.
And did you put that in writing?
I believe so, yes.
Is that exhibit forty-nine?
Yes.
So we're at the hearing now. They, you've denied the permit, but it still exists while this hearing's pending. Take a moment, explain to the council what you think should be done with the entertainment permit that JP 23 possesses.
I think there should be restricted hours as far as live entertainment goes. And my recommendation would be to have live entertainment cease at midnight on the weekends. And I can be specific about the days of the week that constitute the weekends, and then eleven PM on the weekdays.
And how do you think that'll change things out there in terms of the crime and arrest picture?
I believe, and I should say that I'm an advocate for a kind of a ongoing review every so many months to see if that is in any way affecting the crime picture there and affecting that traversing the alley and allowing for law enforcement to do what they need to do as well. And so I think it would be something that we would monitor and then make adjustments as necessary in concert with the JP 23.
Thank you, nothing further.
Ms. Harris.
Thank you. So let me see if I understand this correctly. Your suggestion on the restrictions is to have JP 23's customers leave earlier than other establishes, establishments to avoid a influx of people within that alley area. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, as outlined in the letter, yes.
Okay. And you think that the restrictions on the live entertainment would achieve that goal?
I think they might contribute to achieving that goal, yes. That comes in concert with all the other things listed in the letter, as well as a responsible operator.
Answer my question, we gotta get through this.
Wait a second, counsel, if you've got an objection, you state the objection. Do not talk to the witness other than. Do not talk to the witness other than a question, please. If you have an objection to the chair, we will rule on the objection. Do not engage the witnesses, any witness, it's a question only.
Okay, Mr. Potter, I'm gonna state my objection as non-responsive as to the last part of that sentence.
You move to strike?
I move to strike.
Stricken, next question.
All right, Chief. What are the restriction times that you're suggesting?
I wanna be specific about the days of the week, just to make sure that we. So for Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, my recommendation would be eleven PM. And for Thursday, Friday, Saturday would be midnight.
So let me, do you have any concerns that if the live entertainment were to cease at those times, that the customers at JP 23 would just go to another location and you may have the same problem over there?
Sure.
Chief, did you attend a community meeting on May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one at three PM at the Fullerton Community Center?
I don't remember the exact date, but I do remember going to a meeting at the community center, yes.
Okay, and was this a meeting with restaurant owners?
Yes.
Did you speak to those who were in attendance?
I did.
What did you speak to them about?
We talked about security.
What specifically?
I don't recall my exact words.
And was a representative from JP 23 present at that meeting, do you recall?
They were.
Okay. And representatives from other downtown restaurants and bars were also present?
Yes.
Were there any other city officials there?
There were.
Okay. And why was this meeting called?
In response to an uptick of problems in downtown.
Including crime?
Including crime.
And that was in all of downtown area?
That's correct.
What area do you consider downtown Fullerton?
The same as outlined by Lieutenant Craft.
Okay. Is that kind of the standard for the police department? Are there set boundaries within the police department of what you define as downtown Fullerton?
Where we focus our efforts as relates to downtown Fullerton, yes.
Okay, thank you. So around this time at the meeting, there, there was a high volume of criminal activity going on in downtown Fullerton, correct?
Yes.
And so this purpose of this meeting was trying to get a, trying to get a handle on that with cooperation from the business owners, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you recall at that meeting, any of the business owners informing you that people were consuming alcohol and or doing drugs in the parking structures in downtown Fullerton? Do you recall that conversation?
I, no, I don't recall that portion of the conversation, is it possible, yes, and do we experience that, yes?
Did you recall any conversation about the CCTV cameras in the parking structures at that meeting?
I do believe they came up, yes.
Okay, can you tell me, do you recall how, in what context those were mentioned?
No.
Okay. Do those cameras work?
No.
How long have they not worked?
For some time, I don't have the exact date, but over a year.
Okay. Having those cameras working, would that, in your opinion, would that assist the Fullerton Police Department in dealing with some of the criminal activity downtown?
Yes.
Would it assist in prosecution of crimes downtown?
Yes.
Chief, I wanna talk about capacity really quick. One of the things that you mentioned was the overcrowding event on June twenty-sixth, I believe?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And if you could look at exhibit forty-seven for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, in, on page two, under paragraph A, the remedy portion of that part, well, actually, let's start at the top. Second paragraph under subsection A, about midway through that paragraph, you wrote, your maximum allowed occupancy at this time was a hundred and seventy-eight persons. And then down below, under remedy, first of all, let me ask you, do you see where I'm referring to in that letter?
Yes.
Okay, now if you go down below, starting at the second, or one, two, third paragraph, second sentence, you write, "The most recent occupancy number issued by the Fullerton Fire Marshal indicates you may have one hundred and seventy-six persons inside and another thirty on your patio." So my question is, which number are you contending as the capacity number?
The one that's listed in the remedy section.
Okay, so the one hundred and seventy-six plus thirty?
Correct.
Okay. And are you aware that the CUP provides a capacity of two ninety-nine to JP 23?
Yes.
Okay. Can you turn to exhibit twelve for me, please?
Sure.
Can you describe that document when you get there?
Looks like the City Fullerton Fire Code permit.
And does it have an issuance date on it?
Yes.
What is that date?
Nine twenty-eight, twenty seventeen.
And can you take a look at exhibit two for me, please? And can you describe that document?
Resolution for JP 23's, looks like their conditional use permit maybe?
Okay, and if you turn to page three, this was adopted on October sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, correct?
Yes.
So this was approved after, two years after the fire code permit, correct?
Yes.
And in this more recent document, JP 23 was given a two ninety-nine capacity, true?
I don't control capacity, so I'm not certain what the, who the authority is on issuing the capacity.
Okay, I'm gonna move to strike as non-responsive. Okay, Chief, can you take a look at, still on exhibit two, exhibit B of exhibit two? Item number three. It states, "The maximum capacity established by the building code and fire code shall not exceed two hundred and ninety-nine people at any time." Says that, right?
I haven't found it yet, but. I'm sorry, you said B three?
It's exhibit B.
Which is number two?
In exhibit two, yes. And it's item number three.
Yes.
Okay. And if you look at page two of exhibit two, and you go down to item number C, do you see where it says fact? Right there. The cup states, "Information provided by the Fullerton Police Department and Fullerton Fire Department," correct?
Yes.
Okay, so based on that language, I would assume that in approving this conditional use permit, that there was some input by the police department and the fire department, wouldn't there be?
It would seem that way, yes.
Okay, who determines capacity?
The fire marshal.
Okay, so if the CUP says two ninety-nine, who would have had to make that determination?
I have no idea.
Okay. Would it be the fire marshal?
Potentially.
Okay. Do we just pull a capacity number out of thin air? Okay, withdraw. So my question is, why are you using the two thousand and seventeen fire code permit when there's a subsequent document in two thousand and nineteen issued by the city that establishes capacity at two ninety-nine?
This is not my area of expertise, but I do know that during a remedy meeting, we discuss this at great length. There was a discrepancy in that. And so in order, before I sent you the remedy letter, I did some research on this. And my understanding is that fire marshal is the authority. The CUP language is standard language based on square footage or type. And then from there, when it says not to exceed, the fire marshal can't put it above two ninety-nine. But the fire marshal can institute something that is more restrictive based on their assessment of the situation. So that's what my research showed and why I wrote that in the report that I sent to you.
Okay.
But there's people here that might be able to answer that better than me, but not me.
So the fire, the fire marshal would have the knowledge on that issue, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, but he's not here, is he?
No.
Okay. Let me ask you another question, and I don't know if you have the answer to this or not. Was any capacity issued for the outdoor temporary dining areas in downtown Fullerton?
I have no idea.
Okay. Do you know whether the overcapacity citation in June twenty sixteen, twenty twenty-one, do you have any idea whether or not the temporary outdoor dining area was considered in that citation?
I don't know.
Do you have any knowledge on whether or not they counted people in that area? Do you have any knowledge on whether or not they counted people in that area?
I don't.
In your letter that you had sent on August, uh, 17th, 2021, which was exhibit 46, you stated there were a total of 213 calls for service. And we've seen the CAD call sheet for JP 23, which is offered into evidence, and at the top, there's a number that says 211. So my question is, where did you get the additional two calls in the letter?
That I don't know.
Okay. Did you rely on the CAD call sheet for drafting your August 17th correspondence?
No.
Okay. How did you get the, the number?
Information from staff.
Okay. Do you know whether that 213 calls includes, uh, PED checks?
I, I don't.
Do you know whether that number includes alarms?
I don't.
Do you know whether that number includes bar checks?
I do not.
Property calls?
I don't.
Okay. Do you know whether that 213 number includes any transient problems?
I don't.
Do you know whether that 213 call number includes any welfare checks?
I don't.
But you're raising the 213 number in your decision with respect to renewing JP 23's live entertainment permit. So wouldn't it be prudent to do some investigation into the substance of some of those calls?
It would.
Okay. You had a chance to review the CAD call sheet, haven't you, at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you agree that some of those calls are, are not particularly relevant to the issue before us?
Yes.
Would you agree that calls related to parking on that CAD sheet, CAD call sheet, aren't relevant to whether or not you need, whether or not there's a renewal of the live entertainment permit?
I would say potentially.
Okay, how so?
In that if it's, it's something that's contributing to an issue at that particular location, and perhaps it's related to the amount of patrons or the type of entertainment being offered on that particular night, it's something that could be considered, but not always.
Okay. Do you have any knowledge, just by looking at the CAD call sheet, on whether or not any of the parking issues were related to JP 23?
No.
Okay. And the PED checks on that call, are they necessarily relevant in your decision regarding the live entertainment permit?
They may be.
Okay, how so?
Depending on the substance of that or the reason behind the, the pedestrian check, if it was someone who was intoxicated coming from the establishment, that would be relevant. If it was someone who was found to be in possession narcotics and said they were selling inside the establishment potentially, not that that was the case, but those are the types of scenarios that may be germane to my review of an entertainment permit.
Okay. But looking at the evidence and looking at the CAD call sheet, we, we have no idea the facts behind the PED, PED checks, do we?
You don't have that data in front of you, no.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Yes, briefly. Was Fire Chief Adam Loser present for the remedy meeting?
Yes.
And, uh, did you make an inquiry of him, or did somebody make an inquiry of him as to the occupancy limit number?
I did.
And, and is that how that number got resolved?
Yes, sir.
And either which way we cut it, whether it's 178 with 30 on the patio or 299, 333 people still over that number, isn't it?
That's correct.
Nothing further.
Yes, uh, just a couple. Chief, in the past three years, have there been any other overcapacity issues with JP 23, to your knowledge?
I'm aware of one that I think I mentioned in the letter, and I don't remember the date. It may be within range, it may not be.
Might be outside of that three-year range.
Possible.
Okay. And when you're considering overcapacity, do you take into consideration the number of people over capacity?
Are you talking as it relates to my review of an entertainment permit, or are you talking about criminal prosecution of the, the violation?
I'm talking about how it pertains to this hearing and the live entertainment permit. And, and let me ask another way. Would it be relevant if it was one person versus 150 over capacity?
It may, but what was more troubling in this circumstance was that there was no effort being made to count, and that count fell to staff. So if there was, if, if we had walked up and someone had said, "Yeah, we're at 333, but we have 10 people leaving," there was some sort of plan on part of staff to mitigate that issue, that to me would be different, right, than not knowing and then forcing staff to do the count and then having to hold someone accountable. So yes and no. Does that make sense?
Thank you. And that's the one incident that you can recall that that's taken place in the past three years?
At JP 23, yes.
At JP 23, yes. Okay. I have no further questions.
Uh, City Rests.
1:07, thank you. I'm resting.
Pardon, I, what was that?
Do you wish to make any motions for the record?
No, Mr. Potter. All right, may?
You may.
Okay. I'm gonna call Sammy Marzougi.
I do.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Sammy Marzougi.
Okay.
Can you spell your last name for us, please?
Yes, sir. M-A-R-Z-O-U-G-U-I.
Thank you. Do you mind if I call you Sammy rather than mispronounce your name all afternoon?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. Are you employed at JP 23?
Yes, I am.
How long have you been employed at JP 23?
Since November 2015.
Okay. What is your current position at JP 23?
Uh, General Manager.
And how long have you been JP 23's General Manager?
Uh, about three years now.
Okay. Have you been involved in the, the efforts to install the lighting on the north side of the building?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Can you tell me when you first, um, made contact with the city after the CUP was approved regarding the lighting on the north side of the building?
Uh, December 23rd.
And what was that regarding?
It was regarding the type of fixtures that would be allowed to put on the face of the building on Commonwealth.
Okay. And did the city want approval of those fixtures?
Uh, they approved a, a certain style, which was a barn-style light fixture.
Did you have to provide them options, um, for them to approve?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And did they approve a certain fixture?
Yes, they have.
Did you buy those lights?
Yes, they're in my office currently.
I'm sorry, what was that last part?
Yes, they are in my office currently.
Okay. How much did it cost to purchase those lights?
Like around $100 a light.
Okay. How many did you purchase?
Four.
So $400 approximately?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So after you had the initial conversation regarding what lights to purchase, did you have any, um, further communications with the city about how to go about the process of submitting your plans?
Uh, I did in person, and, uh, then I reached out to Fullerton Electric to get a quote, uh, which was supposed to go through all the permitting.
Okay. Do you recall when you contacted Fullerton Electric to get a quote?
Around January, because I waited after the holidays.
January of?
About 2020.
Okay. And did you receive a quote from Fullerton Electric?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Do you see that book sitting in front of you?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you turn to exhibit 57 in that book, please? Is that the quote that you received from Fullerton Electric?
Yes, it is.
What is the amount of that?
5,560, I believe.
Okay. And with the electrical company, were they gonna take responsibility for submitting the plans and obtaining permits too, if you were to hire them?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Were you initially a bit surprised by the cost of this?
Yes, I was.
Okay. And did JP 23 decide not to hire Fullerton Electric Company because of that cost?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that, that was in January 2020, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, when, when did JP 23, uh, close down due to the COVID-19 pandemic?
A little before March 2020. Oh, actually, sorry, March 17th, 2020, St. Patrick's Day.
Okay. And when did they reopen again?
I was furloughed for like a couple of months before going back, uh, so...
So let me ask, during the time that you were furloughed, you weren't working, so therefore, the effort to get the electrical, um, applications and plans and everything was on hold. You, you weren't working because your employer was closed, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So when you returned to work, um, did you go back to trying to figure out the issue with respect to installation of lighting?
Not right away. Uh, we were dealing with a pandemic.
Okay. So you were dealing with some other issues?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Were you dealing with trying to get, you know, employees and staff to come back to work?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So at some point, you, after you reopened, did you come back to getting the permits and, and plans in order and trying to work that out?
Um, eventually, when it was brought up to our attention again to, about the lighting.
Okay. Did you submit plans?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Were those plans accepted?
No, they were not.
Why not?
Uh, the first reason was, uh, Title 24 for the lighting, which I wasn't familiar with at all.
Okay. And you said the first reason? Was there another reason?
On the second submittal, yes.
Okay. What was the reason on the second submittal?
Uh, they were asking for a photometric, uh, survey.
Okay. So you did two submittals and twice they were rejected with some corrections?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the last time it was, uh, returned for a photometric survey?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Did you hire somebody to perform the photometric survey?
Yes, we have.
Okay. How long did it take you to find, or, strike that. Who did you hire?
Uh, we hired, um, an engineer.
How long did it take you to find an engineer to be able to perform that survey?
About a month or so.
And then after you hired him, how long did it take him to complete the survey?
Close to, close to a month as well.
Okay. Has the survey been completed?
We just received it, uh, two days ago.
Okay. Do you have plans in your possession today to submit to the city for the installation of the lighting?
I do at the restaurant.
Okay. And you plan to submit those either today, if there's time allowing, or within the next couple of days?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Do you have any knowledge about the lights that were installed on the west side of the building?
Uh, yes, I do.
What do you recall about that installation?
There was a conversation with Lieutenant Rios at the time about putting, uh, lighting just to deter criminals or any criminal activity. And, uh, we just bought the lights and put them up, and he said that was, he was satisfied with that and that we should go to the city and put them, um, get like a over-the-counter approve, uh, approval, so...
Okay. And was it your intention to get the approval at the same time that you were applying for approval to install the, the north side?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that was to avoid duplicate costs or additional costs of having to do it separately, is that correct?
That is correct.
Do you plan to do that when you submit the plans for the north?
Yes, ma'am.
Installation? Uh, can you turn to exhibit? Or actually, one more question about lighting. Can you take a look at fif, exhibit 58, please? Can you tell me what exhibit 58 is?
Uh, this was a second quote, uh, that was given to us. We had, uh, hired him, and he did submit, he's, uh, the last person that submitted with the city. And it's the last one that got denied for the photometric survey.
Okay, so you hired Bolt Electric?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And they have taken on the responsibility of pulling the permits for both the north and the west side, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can you turn to exhibit 55?
What's the number, sorry?
55. Can you tell me what this document is?
So this is an agreement, uh, that I wrote between us and the tattoo shop.
Okay. Let's start with the first page. What's the first page showing, showing me? It's an email from, from you to Tony Rios, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that email is dated August 23rd, 2019, correct?
That is correct.
And it has a scan attachment. Is the second page of exhibit 55 that scan attachment that you sent to Tony Rios?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Now, what, the title of the document is "A Deed Granting an Easement." And based on what you said, is this an agreement between you, or, strike that, between JP 23 and the tattoo parlor next door with respect to the queuing line?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And can you turn to exhibit 56, please? Exhibit 56 also appears to be an email dated August 23rd, 2019, from Tony Rios to you. You received this email?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Can you, and was this email in response to you sending Tony Rios the document contained in exhibit 55?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Can you read what Tony Rios emailed back to you?
"Thank you for handling this. I will have this put in your file. Thank you again, Tony."
Okay. Since August 23rd, 2019, have you ever received anything that would revoke that written consent from the tattoos parlor?
No, I have not.
Have you received anything from the city that would reverse the decision of Tony Rios to accept that document?
No, I have not.
Okay. Did you prepare the security plan?
Uh, yes, I have.
Okay. Can you take a look at exhibit, I think it's seven? Exhibit seven, the question is, is, is this a current, is this a true and correct copy of the currently approved security plan for JP 23?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Can you look at the second page under queuing?
I'm there.
Does the security plan mention the written consent from the tattoo shop?
Uh, yes, it does.
Did you give the security plan to Tony Rios?
Yes, I have.
And ha- did he approve that plan?
Yes, he has.
Has that, has this plan, has that plan changed since then?
No, it has not.
Okay. No further questions.
Mr. Palmer, uh, any props?
No, sir.
Thank you. Next witness, please.
Mr. Potter, what's my time?
Twenty-three minutes.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna call Jacob Puzikala.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Well, let's have the swan first.
Oh, yep. Let's do that.
State under penalty of perjury, the testimony shown during this hearing shall be the truth.
Yes.
Proceed, please.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Uh, Jacob Puzikala.
And, and, sir, would you spell your last name for the record, please?
E S N Peter, O O, Z as in zebra, H I K A L A.
Just like it sounds.
Puzikala, yeah. Well, it's a long story. It's good enough.
Do you mind if I call you Jacob?
Please.
Okay. I think I'm pretty good at pronouncing your last name, but you just heard, uh, Sammy testify.
Yes.
So, we're gonna try to make this brief. He testified with respect to the lighting issues and the procedure that JP twenty-three has gone through. Do you, and, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think he can't explain it all.
Okay.
It was a process. We've been trying to tackle for a while now.
And you're the, you are the owner of JP twenty-three, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have anything to add with respect to the queuing issue?
No, I think it was, I Sammy's actually in charge of the operations on a daily basis, but at the time, it was between me and To- me and Sergeant Rios that were having discussion to get that CUP passed with the, um, queue line.
Okay. You might wanna move your mic a little bit closer.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you. The lights on the west side of the building, were they installed prior to the CUP approval?
Yes, it was.
And why was that?
Uh, we know, we have a clo- a good relationship with Sergeant Rios. At the time, the discussion was, hey, there's not lighting in the alley. So, he, it felt like the PD wanted it a little urgently done, so we already had the wiring, so I just put it in with the, with the, with the contractor electrician at the time.
And then, that was added to the, as a condition of the CUP that was in the process of being decided, correct?
That was agreed between Sergeant Rios and myself of what, where we need lighting to increase safety for around this building. That was a discussion between us.
And then, you agreed that you would also install lighting on the north side of the building?
Yes, I did, yes.
And that became part of your CUP as well?
Correct.
Okay. You received, uh, in twenty-nineteen, you, you received your CUP approval. And, um, in that approval, you had a cap- it stated a capacity at two-hundred-and-ninety-nine, correct? You had any reason to believe since two-thousand nineteen that your capacity was not two-hundred-and-ninety-nine?
No, I did not.
You were acting on the conditional use permit, permit that the city gave you stating you had a capacity of two-ninety-nine, correct?
Plus the additional temporary patio, which is probably...
I'll get to that. But just your normal inside and then your permanent patio?
Yes.
Okay. So, you do have a, you were granted a temporary outdoor dining space by the city, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And did you have that space on June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one?
Yes, I did.
Do you know how big that space is?
Approximately fourteen-hundred square foot. Fourteen eighty-five, to be exact.
And is it your understanding that the, the three-hundred-and-ninety-nine of twenty-nineteen obviously did not include that outdoor dining area? Because it wasn't there at the time, right?
No.
Do you have any knowledge that how capacity is calculated?
I do, actually, pretty well.
Okay. How do you have that knowledge?
If it's dining, it's, uh...
Well, I mean, what is your knowledge based on?
At the multiple places, multiple restaurants I've opened and working with architects and figuring the numbers out.
Okay. And working on city permits and...
Government permits, exactly. In both cities, I have restaurants in.
What's your understanding that how capacity is?
Uh, dining is every fifteen, every, one person for every fifteen square feet. Dancing is one for every seven-point-five square feet.
So, did you ever receive any issued capacity on the outdoor, um, temporary dining?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. But based on the size, what would you consider that capacity to be for that space?
Ninety-nine more people.
Okay. So, if you had a ca- capacity of two-hundred-and-ninety-nine based on your CUP and you had an additional space which, in your opinion, had a capacity of ninety-nine, that's a total capacity of three-hundred-and-ninety-eight, if my math is correct.
Your math is correct.
And that patio was in place on June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one?
Yes, it was.
And you were cited for having three-hundred-and-thirty-three people, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, is it your position that you were not over capacity based on that analysis we just went through?
Yes, that would be my position.
Okay. But did you challenge the citation?
No, I, I did not challenge it. Sa- Sammy was in charge of that.
Okay. Did it just slip through the cracks and not get dealt with?
I believe he dealt with it.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wasn't involved in that.
Okay. What are your en- hours, what are your entertainment hours?
Well, um, till one-thirty AM every day, seven days a week.
And when do you s- u- usually, you have a DJ, correct?
Yes, we do.
And when does the DJ start?
Um, between nine and ten, ten PM, varies. Usually around ten, right past, past dinner, ten PM.
Okay. And is that seven days a week or does it differ?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay. You're familiar with the terms that are being requested to be imposed, correct?
I do.
Okay. Can you tell me how that would affect JP twenty-three and its ability to do business?
A good, good, good portion of the business comes from the post-ten PM, um, patrons that come in. That's a good chunk of our business, probably almost fifty percent. It's hard to engage at this moment because we're just coming off the pandemic and crowds have shifted and changed compared to the previous years. But it employs possibly, you know, probably like twelve DJs, fourteen, fifteen security guards, as well as, uh, twenties-plus staff, um, bartenders and servers, cocktail servers, et cetera.
And do they work during those evening hours more than during those day hours?
This is where they do, they do make their income and their livelihood, is those hours, correct?
So, what would happen if, if there was no live entertainment after eleven PM during the week and midnight on the weekend?
I would hate to say this, but it do- it would take an effect, it would be an effect on the, on the bottom line of the business and there would be, would have to be layoffs on most of them.
Have you made any significant changes to your security protocols in, in the past year?
Well, it's kind of, um, we came out of the pandemic, it was just wild. I mean, our society right now is just wild, general people fighting in airports, trying to airplane targets. It's just, um, being caged for a year. It was, and coming out of that where we were going dining, patio, then inside and dining only with separation, then slowly the DJ and the full opening, it was quite the experience for myself as well as all my managers because I saw what was under, I was undergoing. It was, um, it's not something that you are proud of or you don't want that in there, but it was very difficult, not only on the PD, which I, I totally understand because I, I was hearing stuff about it, but as al- as well as my security and my staff were, uh, engaged in getting assaulted. It's not something that, uh, we want to be part of or are proud of. It's just the times are changing and, you know, there's protests and BLMs and there's so much stuff going on that, you know, we're, we're just going through a transition as society. And, uh, as being a restaurant and a bar owner, we, it, we were at the front line at that time.
Did you make changes in your security protocol?
I, that's the question. Uh, what I did was, we hadn't, we were outsourcing our security and I didn't like the way they worked. There was an incident in May where, um, I, I just thought this is way too much. And what we did is we started to go, we, I created an umbrella, uh, security company, hired, um, an experienced, um, operations manager, changed the way, as much as I could, I mean, it's still, it's still a bar, changed what, changed the way some of the procedures and how we are, uh, aligning. It was just an, it's more of an adjustment what we had to do because the crowds were changing. And the mandates were changing of how crowds could be inside a bar in a restaurant. One, one minute you can only sit, then you can have dancing, then you can sit, then you can only outside. It was a constant shifting of between how the security prot- protocol had to evolve while these mandates kept on changing.
Do you feel like you've implemented, um, some security protocols that have significantly improved safety in and around your establishment?
Absolutely. It's, it's my number one priority, make sure the security and the safety of the patrons and the community around is top priority.
So, we only have, um, calls to service and incidents through, uh, July of twenty-twenty-one. We're now in December of twenty-twenty-one. How have the past couple of months been?
I don't have numbers in my head, but I mean, I'm not always at the op- up, at the stars, I'm, I'm barely there. But, but I always get phone calls from my general managers to tell me if there's a major issue, I would, I'm the first one to know. So, my experience is that it has reduced significantly. That's from what I've been told from my staff, that's they're working.
Okay. So, anything you want the city council to hear, other than what I've asked you?
I mean, I just, like, you know, there's, you people, there's a lot of these, a lot of these incidences, yes, but you have to remember, like, this is probably, I do almost four million dollars in business there, is very, very busy bar and restaurant. We, it's a significant amount of business and, you know, ninety-nine-point-nine-nine-nine percent of people come there, enjoy it, and they keep coming back because they enjoy the experience there. So, yes, we have these issues. And I'm the first one to tell you that, you know, this is detrimental to any business. If there's constantly fights in bars, bar fights in a bar, that's not an enjoyable experience for customers to come back to. So, just want you to, uh, just put that in consideration that we are very busy because of the environment that is there. Our business is to sell, people to come together, enjoy, have drinks, laughter. That is the main purpose, we get, bring people together. Um, during the times of moving from the pandemic and past it, I mean, I've written letters to you guys right after one big incident because I was concerned, you know, I was concerning for the PD, the police officers that are being assaulted. I saw so many, just, there was no, no respect, there was no order. And I think it's just because of the way, uh, people, uh, sitting in a house for, you know, seven, eight months straight, not mingling with people. It's just what's, and we're still dealing with that, I think, in society, period. It's just how people came out and they were acting like a couple of strings and, you know, they act like caged animals. I'm sorry to say that, but that's what, well, that's what it is, you know? Just coming out and just not talking to people and blowing up. But normally, that's, I don't, I enjoy, I see my establishment being very amazing, good employees that take care of anybody who walks in there. There's a lot of love in there and that's how I see it. I see, I think it's a good company.
Okay.
You know?
I don't have any further questions?
All right. Uh, Cross?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Good afternoon, Jacob.
Good afternoon.
You don't mind me calling you Jacob?
You don't mind if I greg?
That'd be fine. I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
Mr. Palmer, yes, sir.
It's your restaurant bar, right?
Yes, it is.
So, you have responsibility for its operation?
Always.
And I understand you delegate, you know, some of the day-to-day to Sammy, right?
Very good people, yes.
But you're responsible?
Of course.
Can you explain to this city council how a security guard under your control was in possession of metal knuckles for three months on your premises?
I couldn't, I can't answer that question because I'm, I'm not the one supervising the specific employee. However, if it's in his pocket, we don't do searches, we, we don't search our security guards. We've changed, we changed our protocol after that incident.
Can you explain to this city council how a Fullerton police officer was able to find those metal knuckles within one night, but you couldn't find them for three months?
Like I said, I don't, we don't, and my belief is, we don't search our security guards prior to that incident to see if they're armed or not.
I was listening to you carefully during your direct examination and I want to make sure that I unders- that I wrote down what I understood you said, okay?
Okay.
If this council imposes a reduced entertainment hours, right, as proposed by the chief of police, you with me so far?
Yes.
Did you say that the effect of that would be a drop in revenue and layoffs?
That's significantly, yes.
Okay. So, it wouldn't put you out of business?
I don't know, you, well, it's close because it's, it's a big establishment, the rent there is almost twenty-five dollars per month. It's, it's some of the cover charges, the late night is paying for these things, yes. It might put me out of business.
But when you, but, when Ms. Harris asked you a question, your, your response was it would reduce revenue and it would cause some layoffs?
I said it reduces by over fifty percent. That could close a business down, especially after surviving a pandemic.
And, and your entertainment hours under the permit are, I think it's nine or nine-thirty to one-thirty, right?
Yes.
Okay. And the proposal that Chief Dunn has been talking about is going to, uh, ceasing the entertainment, um, at eleven on weekdays and midnight on weekends, right? Is that how you understand it?
The original proposal, I, that I understood was ten PM, the first one.
You understand what it is?
I don't, I'm not sure where we are in negotiations, but that's what it is and that's what it is.
If the record reflects that it's eleven, eleven PM, we can't talk together because...
Wait until the question is finished, sir. Thank you, Jacob.
The proposal, if, if the record reflects, proposal is to cease entertainment Wednesday, I think I wrote this down somewhere, uh, Wednesday, Sunday through...
Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Sunday through Wednesday at, uh, eleven and Friday, Saturday, Sunday at midnight. Is that how I understand it?
Yes.
Okay. So, on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, you're only losing an hour and a half, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And on the other days, you're losing two and a half hours?
Correct.
And that, and that, that small little change will create this issue with your revenue and layoffs?
Absolutely.
Nothing further?
Any reading, right?
Yes. Jacob, I believe you stated when you, when asked about the, the brass knuckles or the metal knuckles in the pocket. So, prior to that incident, you didn't search your security guards, correct?
The, the company that we hired was outsourced, it wasn't even directly employees of JP twenty-two.
So, the security company were contract security?
We trusted their managers.
After that incident, did you terminate your relationship with that, that security company?
Um, shortly after because we had to transition, but we definitely terminated our relation with that employee right away and then it took a transition into getting rid of the, the company, security company.
Okay. So, you fired that employee?
Yeah.
And then, you transitioned out of that relationship with that company?
Yes.
And did you also implement a policy to ha- search your security card, guards going forward for anything that they could potentially bring on the premise?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. No further questions?
Nothing.
Next witness, Ms. Harris?
How much time do I have?
Uh, eleven minutes.
Can I request a short five-minute recess?
We'd like to press through. We've been here for a very long time at this point, please.
All right. I need one, one second just to talk to my client to see if we're gonna
Thank you.
Call another witness. Mr. Potter, we're gonna rest.
I'm sorry, let's, let's go back on the record. Madam Cork, are we back on? Mr. Reporter, are you with us? Yes? Ms. Harris, next witness.
We're gonna rest.
Very well. Uh, we have allocated 15 minutes per side for closing argument.
Mr. Potter, I may have one rebuttal witness.
But before we do that, are there any rebuttal witnesses?
Give me a minute. No rebuttal witnesses?
Any rebuttal, you don't have any rebuttal.
No, I do not.
We've allocated 15 minutes aside. Since Mr. Palmer has the burden to prove, he gets to argue after Ms. Harris does, but he can't go over his 15 minutes. So he's gonna have to break it up somehow, 10 and 5, 11 and 4, however he does it. And then Ms. Harris will have 15, and I'm serious, at 15, you're getting the high sign and we're done. I think we can have closing arguments wrap up quicker than that based upon the excellent presentation of the evidence by both sides to get this thing done within our time parameters, which I appreciate greatly, the council appreciates greatly. Mr. Palmer, the floor is yours.
Would you, council, would you like me to go to the lectern or is it remaining here? Fine. Thank you. I'm not going to take nearly those 15 minutes. The lights, the exterior lights, there really is no excuse for not putting them up. I mean, there really isn't. We could talk about the COVID all day long, but he was required to install those lights with a building permit as of October 16th, 2019, and the planning commission gave him 60 days to do so. There was no pandemic back then. The pandemic didn't start until St. Patrick's Day, the following year. So there really is no excuse that this exterior lighting was not done within the 60 days. Even if there were issues about the type of light or a concern about the insulation or a concern about the cost, apparently he did nothing about that for 60 days. And he didn't start even riding this pony until almost two years later. It's just unacceptable. And I'm, I'm wondering, I mean, I'm wondering if there's some events that happened on the west side of his building or the north side of the building that he perhaps does not want illuminated, just a thought. Crime and arrest picture, we've heard lots of stuff about, from Ms. Harris, about all the, going through all the individual reports and, and diving into them and whether or not the person was actually at JP 23. That misses the point. That completely misses the point of this, of this exercise. We did not confine, and Chief Dunn did not confine, his issues about JP 23 to the, to just the interior square footage of the building. There's queuing that goes on. It's in his security plan. His security plan tells everybody reading it that at any given time, there's gonna be up to 80 people standing outside that building. Well, they're his people. It's not because they're just not inside the building that we don't get to count them and we don't get, we don't get to be concerned about them. The queuing is the problem. And you heard Lieutenant Kraft, he said the queuing happens late at night, between 11:00 and 1:00 or so. That's when the queuing happens. That's when a lot of people are waiting to get in. And they're waiting to get in on the south sidewalk of Commonwealth, right by the front door. And they're waiting to get in on the west alley near the patio, which is where a lot of these events occurred. So he doesn't get to say, I'm not responsible for what goes on outside when the people are waiting to get in his establishment. His security plan acknowledges it, and yet he can't take care of it. There's 28 events. Now, you, you've seen, you've seen some of the evidence. You saw the letters going by that there were 44 crime reports and something like 50-something arrests. Well, when I put together this exhibit book, I went through each and every one of those 44. I saw one where just two people were jaywalking across Commonwealth from the north sidewalk to the south sidewalk. You don't see that in this book. You know why? I couldn't tie it to JP 23. So I didn't put it in. Wouldn't be fair. There was another one where there was a drunk woman in a car, in addition to the one that's already in there. Again, I couldn't tie that to JP 23, so I didn't put it in the book. Ones, the ones that I do think tie to JP 23, the total is 28 events, 28 crimes, 28 arrests. In fact, way more arrests because some of these events generated multiple arrests of multiple people. But there's 28 events in this book. I looked at it very carefully. 24 of them, of those events, occurred between 11:00 PM and 2:00 AM. Only a couple of them happened in the 10:00 PM hour or before that, and only a couple of them happened after the 2:00 AM hour. That's the problem time period, between 11:00 PM and 2:00 AM. The vast majority of the crimes and the arrests occur, you could look at it yourself in the book, they occur between those hours. How many shootings do we have to tolerate? How many people with a bullet in their buttocks do we have to tolerate? How many sexual assaults do we have to tolerate? How many assaults and batteries and assault with a deadly weapon do we have to tolerate? We've tolerated enough. This is the most frequent offender in downtown Fullerton. And I've demonstrated that with a call for service. And Ms. Harris goes on, well, parking problem. All of the, all the businesses we compare JP 23 to, we put all the calls for service. We acknowledge that not of that, not all of them relate to the entertainment permit. But all of them relate to the activity, just the bare bones activity going on. And the closest one to him is Matador with 159. And you talk about Incahoos, Incahoos is a huge place, and they're way down the list. 211 for JP 23. How much do we have to tolerate? So if you look at this from the point of view of the time, 24 out of 28 events that we put in our book occur between 11:00 PM and 2:00 AM, and you can look in the book and find out for yourself. And then we dovetail that with the chief's testimony about what he thinks would be helpful to ameliorate, maybe even eliminate, substantially reduce this problem with the crime picture and the call for service picture at this location. Well, son of a gun, he wants to limit the entertainment permit from 11:00 PM till midnight on certain days. Exactly dovetails with the problems that we have demonstrated at that location. He's not trying to take more of the apple than he's otherwise entitled to. He is taking, he is suggesting to you folks an abatement action that is in line with the nuisance. We would ask you to uphold the entertainment permit, but limit it in conformance with the chief's testimony. Thank you.
Very well. Ms. Harris, you have 15 minutes.
Thank you. Members of the city council, JP 23 has been operating in downtown Fullerton on the corner of Harbor and Commonwealth for many, many years. They employ many members of our community and they serve even more. The consequences of what your decision today will have an effect on more than Jacob Puzikala. And it will affect his staff, his bartenders and his waitresses, his DJs, his security guards, cooks, and all their families less than 10 days before the holiday season. Placing restrictions on JP 23 will lead to the loss of business, which will lead in turn to the reduction of staff, which in turn is a loss to income and familial support to many of the employees who have already suffered through the harsh and unforgiving reality of the COVID-19 pandemic, which shut their place of employment down four months. Mr. Puzikala is not here to fight with the city. He is here to fight for his employees and their families, and he's asking you to consider the same. You have the ability here to formulate your own decision. You have the ability to affirm the decision of Chief Dunn, or you have the ability to reverse the decision of Chief Dunn. Chief Dunn isn't asking you to deny JP 23's live entertainment permit. He's asking you to approve the permit, but restrict live entertainment hours during the hours of 11:00 PM and 2:00 AM on the weekends. This is the time period when JP 23 is fully staffed. This is the only time that the JP 23 can bring on several bartenders, waitresses, security guards, cooks and DJs all at the same time for these individuals to make a living. This is the time when bartenders and servers make their tips. And anybody who has worked one day waiting tables knows how important those tips are to these individuals and their families. These tips pay the bill, they pay the rent, they keep the lights on, they put food on the table. To place these types of restrictions on this particular time period would be an equivalent to shutting the place down. Without live entertainment, people will not come, and without customers, the staff cannot work. It's as simple as that. Chief Dunn is requesting that these restrictions be in place to eliminate issues that have occurred, police issues that have occurred during these hours. However, putting these restrictions on JP 23's live entertainment permit isn't the solution. The crime reports and the calls that we have discussed are a downtown Fullerton issue. The evidence shows a rise in violent crimes across downtown Fullerton on both sides of Commonwealth Avenue. JP 23, however, happens to be in a unique location where there's heavy foot traffic that travels directly behind and in front and beside of its building. Many of the reports that were addressed in this proceeding took place outside of JP 23's legal premises, in the alley or on the public sidewalks. The reports mention no facts that these individuals ever stepped foot in JP 23. I went through those reports. I also asked the lieutenant if those are important facts, which he said they were. He later backpedaled, but initially, he said those are important facts. Of course, they're important facts. Because when you have an incident or you have an arrest outside an establishment and that person is injured, you want to establish where they came from. There's a liability issue there. It's a very important fact. Should be in every single police report. So are we to assume that the omission of these facts was a mistake? That many of them? Or is there an alternative that maybe these individuals were never at JP 23 in the first place? And in that case, they shouldn't be considered. And when you start looking at the evidence and you start looking at these reports and you look at these CAD calls, the numbers are overly inflated. Now, I understand there was some publicity issues over the summer, and they were huge. But we have to look at the evidence here today. Now, I'm not gonna ignore those incidents that have taken place at JP 23 or have some connection to JP 23. They've happened. Jacob acknowledges that there's been incidents. But more than anyone, he doesn't want those incidents at his business. And he has made improvements. He has made changes in security. He has fired individuals responsible for not keeping order in his place of business. And he has replaced them and he has put in place new procedures and protocols. We also know that the Fullerton Police Department during or around the spring and summer of 2021 acknowledged that there was a crime issue in downtown Fullerton. They did not say JP 23 in those reports that I had the lieutenant read. And those are, those are disturbing accounts from police officers. I, no doubt in my mind, there was a concern here. But the language used was there are aggressive individuals in the downtown Fullerton area. There's been an increase in crime. People are not, are not afraid to get arrested. This was not a JP 23 issue, this was a downtown Fullerton issue. And JP 23, yes, was affected by it. By restricting the hours of live entertainment at JP 23, all you're doing is moving the problem elsewhere. You're moving this crowd across the street, across the street that they jaywalk to, that we saw all those pen checks on. There's still hours left in the night for these people to go elsewhere, and they will. There's no doubt that the return to normal life post-COVID shutdown was turbulent in downtown Fullerton. And nobody in this room wants violence in downtown. But shutting down JP 22's business by eliminating the live entertainment is not the solution. And Chief Dunn's not asking you to deny the permit. He's asking you to restrict the time. Although it's clear that the real issue here is the crime numbers, Chief Dunn's also raised additional issues of lighting, installation, capacity and queuing. In this case, you have to find by a preponderance of evidence, which I'm sure Mr. Potter will educate everybody on at a later time. I would argue that there is sufficient evidence here showing two completely numbers for capacity, both created by the city of Fullerton. The subsequent number in the 2019 CUP should supersede all prior determinations of any number before that, regardless on what document it's contained on. The CUP states the input from the fire department was made. That document says 299. That is enough for you to decide that the burden has not been met. Additionally, JP 23 was, had an additional space outside in the temporary patio. And we don't know whether or not that was considered in that site capacity citation or not. We don't know what the capacity of that was. And based on the evidence, there is a possibility that JP 23 wasn't over capacity at all. Similarly, with respect to the queuing, JP 23's security plan sufficiently addresses the written consent of the neighboring tattoo shop. The security plan was approved. This appeared, Chief Dunn's letter, which is the charging document, I believe it's exhibit 47, his remedy actually states that JP 23 is required to follow that security plan. That security plan mentions written consent from the tattoo shop next door. So with the documents, JP 23 is following their security plan, which is the charging document in this case. We also have evidence that Tony Rios approved that plan. And unfortunately, just, everybody's ignoring that. It's there. It's in JP 23's file with the police department and is being ignored. Lastly, Chief Dunn cites the lighting installation issue. The first issue on the west wall installed without a prior permit. We don't deny that. It was installed for the benefit of the city, and it was installed after a conversation with Tony Rios. JP 23's intention after doing that was to pull the permit, at the same time it was pulling the permits on the north side. Those lights are a safety issue. It was dark back there, there is an alley back there. In agreement with Tony Rios, they were installed. And JP 23 isn't sitting around doing nothing with respect to the north side of the building either. They've already submitted plans twice. The cost of this has gone above anything expected. The procedure has gone above anything prospective, but they're, they're sticking to it and they're trying to get that done and they're trying to get that sidewalk illuminated. JP 23 is asking the city council to issue a live permit without any restrictions on those weekend hours. JP 23's position is that they shouldn't be facing this type of punishment when in reality JP 23 has continued to assist the police department and the city of Fullerton in many other aspects. They've provided evidence to the Fullerton Police Department. They've agreed to put up this lighting, which is a very expensive cost to illuminate a public sidewalk. Yes, it's not happening as quickly as everybody would like, but it's still happening. With that, I would just like to thank you for your time here today, and I have nothing further.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, you have six minutes.
Thank you. I'll be briefer than that. I appreciate your attention too. The Chief Dunn, the Fullerton Police Department appreciates your attention throughout this case. I want you to remind you that when he was first asked the question, what is going to be the result? If you uphold the entertainment permit... going to be the result if you uphold the entertainment permit, reduce the hours in conformance with Chief Dunn's recommendation? He said, I will lose revenue and I, I will have to have layoffs. He didn't say it's gonna shut the place down. Now they're saying it's gonna shut the place down. I would submit to you that he's trying to shift the, he's trying to shift the consequences of his actions from him to you. If you do reduce the hours and it does either reduce revenue or cause layoffs, that's Mr., it's Jacob's fault, not yours. Don't let him shift this, this to you. If she, Ms. Harris says, uh, there, pointed out several places in the report where it is a, it sounds to her like a downtown Fullerton in general issue, increase in crime, increase in assaults. Well, if that were true, we would expect Divine, we would expect Matador, we would expect Zings to have way more raw numbers in the CAD, CAD list than does JP twenty-three, and they don't. In fact, a couple of them have way, way less numbers, almost less than one quarter, the number of calls that JP twenty-three has. So if it's a downtown problem in general, apparently it's happening more at JP twenty-three than it is at other places. And the final thing, the overcrowding thing, I, I didn't think this was gonna get a lot of, a lot of, a lot of discussion in this case, but the bottom line is, at 3:33, he's over 299, whatever the number is, he was over. And he got a citation which he didn't fight. If you don't fight the citation, you've kind of admitted the violation. So I don't know why we're spending a lot of time on the overcrowding, seems like he's, he's admitted it. Thank you very much.
Very well. The matter will stand submitted to the city council, who will now retire to deliberate. And upon deliberation, they will instruct me to provide written findings and make those available. And we are not going to say the date that those will be made available, however, as in Brown versus Board of Education, with all deliberate speed, we will attempt to get those findings out, and will notify, notify the parties when it will be put on the agenda for approval at a regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Before we close, I do have some news for our Fullerton residents, some that have been very patient in this process and with their attention. I do have some good news for residents that have been impacted resulting from the work stoppage of our city's trash disposal contractor. That work's stoppage has been mediated and services will return effective tomorrow. For those of you in our community that have Thursday service pickup, your pickup will occur either Friday or Saturday of this week. For those Friday customers, you will, your pickup will take place on Saturday. Every other resident, Monday through Wednesday, services will resume again on Monday, December 20th. If indeed you have trash that requires disposal, we do have a residential trash collection capacity at Independence Park, which is 801 West Valencia Drive, and also at the Fullerton Sports Complex, which is 560 East Silver Pine Street. That said, those in our, our community that are concerned, our city staff and our city council continues to advocate for Fullerton trash collection ratepayers who require a remedy for services not rendered, and we will certainly be pursuing those vigorously. Thank you very much. This hearing's closed.
And lastly, we instruct, on the record, instruct the reporter to prepare a certified transcript of today's proceedings and to make those available within the normal course of turnaround, which I believe is two weeks, two weeks during the holidays. And we will have that transcript today as part of the legislative record, the quality of evidence, place the letter of the funeral and my letter of the celebration. So we do stand again, and we'll now rehandle the city council's vote for the, you can face into the other. Appreciate it.